So I would like to call to order the meeting of the Vergen Union High School Board this evening. And I'd like to start with board reorganization. I'd like to take nominations for the position of Chair.
Move to nominate Kurt Davis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd move to nominate Lori Childers for Chair.
Lori Childers for Chair. Okay, so seeing as though we have two individuals, I think we need to take a vote. Oh, I'm sorry, do I have a second for Lori Childers? I jumped ahead.
I can second.
Okay. So if the board would take out a piece of paper and vote for the position of Chair, and I will collect it, and then I'll stand.
Well, I think about this.
Sheesh.
I want to breathe down your neck.
Is this, um?
It's recycling. Thank you.
Do I have five?
Hey, I got one still. Did these guys get the vote? Are those your guys in here?
Hmm. I don't know. I don't think the three students are able to make a decision. Thank you for just giving me a minute.
Lori Childers. So at this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Lori Childers. Thank you. Hi, everybody. Um, agenda. Yeah. So then, we need to elect a Vice Chair. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Neil Cane.
Yeah. I feel like we're in an episode of Survivor here all of a sudden. Lowitz and...
Are there any other nominations? So, all those in favor? No, it doesn't matter, right? We don't vote. We don't have to vote.
Yeah.
We do still have to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor of Neil being the Vice Chair? Say aye. Any nays? Pass, Neil. Thank you. Take nominations for Clerk? Who was the previous Clerk?
I was.
Yeah, I was, okay.
Yeah, I actually served dual roles last year. I'd like to nominate.
I see, I see. I'd like to nominate Kurt.
No, thank you.
Okay. Richard?
Sure.
I nominate Richard for Clerk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Am I allowed to nominate? Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none? All those in favor of Richard for Clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass, thank you. We'll take nominations for a Addison Northwest Supervisor Union Delegates. Do we need three? You need three. I believe, and probably you should start with a discussion of how the previous three were chosen. Some boards take the officers, others boards make sure that the towns are represented, but you don't have enough delegates to represent all of the towns. Can we have a discussion without a motion? Yes, you can. Does anybody have a problem with doing it the way we've been doing it?
Well, we've been doing it as the Chair and two other members, right? So if we do the Chair and two other members, you are Addison.
Yes.
Cover's Addison. I mean, I think there's some value in making sure that each town is represented across all the schools, one way or another. We had a situation, I think, once when we didn't, right? Maybe that might...
I wouldn't know that. I wouldn't have that history, but that would...
Vergen Elementary has to make sure that they have one for each of their three towns.
Right.
And they haven't reorged yet, obviously, for another week. So whatever happens here, I could report back. I think it's... I think there's a value to it.
Well, but the problem we have is we have four towns and three spots. Well, I'd like to nominate Jeff Glassberg if we're taking nominations.
We can, we were still, we were discussing, but I... We can mix it up.
Well, no, that's okay. Wait and discuss.
I would certainly...
It would be a loss.
That's okay, all right. I'm going to take your nomination. He seconded, okay? Anybody else? Does anybody else have any?
I'm willing to continue in that role if that would be, you know, if you need someone.
And you're Vergens?
Yes, and I'm from Vergens.
Richard, are you interested for Patton?
I'm interested, but I think it's, if we have a Vergens, I think, for being Patton and Vergens are elementary and high school together, you know, it's not one of the elsewhere. I think we should have a fair... I personally believe a Ferrisburg person should be on it, myself. Since we already have a Waybridge and our Waltham and Vergens slash Patton. So I think one of our Ferrisburg, if they're interested, should be, should be offered.
Kurt, George?
I'm not interested.
Okay. George?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Okay.
So, could I point a border?
Yes, sir.
Chair. So if the Chair is one, aren't there only two more?
Yes.
So you've asked three people.
So we're up.
You've already got your...
Yes, and then, and then George and me.
That's...
Three.
Well, I was willing to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that's why she was saying, she's like, we didn't nominate anybody, so then...
Forgive me, it's not personal.
There's only three positions in five towns.
Yes, I see, I see, I see. Thank you, I didn't catch that subtlety. Yes, all right, so let's, we have a nomination for Jeff. Let's vote on that in a second. All those in favor of Jeff being an Addison Northwest Supervisor Union Delegate, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, it's passed. So I'll take nominations for delegates. Anyone interested in nominating George or Chris?
I'd like to nominate George Gardner.
A second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of George as the Addison Northwest Delegate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Jeff, George? And we need one... No, and do I, do we vote for the Chair, or does that automatic?
The Chair votes.
No, we've always had the Chair serve.
That's just the...
We've always had the Chair serve. Just in practice. There's nothing untoward about that.
Thank you, thank you. Then moving on, I will take nominations for the Patricia... I don't remember what the A stands for, Hannaford's Career Center. We need one. Richard was the...
And I would continue that if people would like me to do something.
Like to move Richard Rathman?
Second.
There you go. Thank you. All those in favor of Richard for the PAHCC Delegate, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Thank you. Newspaper of record?
It has been Addison Independent.
Is there any reason that anybody can think of that we would want to change that?
Not one.
Not one? Okay, can we just say it's, we need to vote? Okay, all those in favor of the Addison Independent?
I'd like to move that we...
Oh, yes, excuse me.
Consider Addison Independent the paper of record.
Forgive my newness.
Second by Richard.
Thank you.
It was moved by Neil, second by Richard.
Enough room back there?
We have a motion on the floor that's been seconded to have Addison Independent as the newspaper of record. Is there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of the Addy Indy for newspaper of record, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. Addison Independent it is. Committee assignments. We currently only have one committee. And, um... We don't have any other committees, so we'll just focus on that one until we have others. I am currently the Chair of that committee and am interested in continuing if anyone is interested in...
I'd like to move Lori Childers to continue leading the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor of Lori Childers for Chair, Committee Assignment to the Finance Committee? Please signify by saying aye, any nays? Okay. It would be good to have two more. George and Chris have been...
I'm willing to continue.
Would you like to continue?
Continue.
Then I nominate George and Chris.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Can we vote on two at the same time? Two separate votes? Okay, all those in favor of George being on the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? All right. All those in favor of Chris being on the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? All right, thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to ask you to consider revising the order of the agenda. We have quite a number of people here tonight, and I think that probably has something to do with the budget, and I think they would like to see that discussed before we get way to the end of the meeting.
Okay. Do you have a suggestion? I mean, we have, we have the auditors here, and I hate to make them wait. Hi, Jesse. If we, and then, of course, the student reps, we don't want to keep those guys. Is there... We, there's no reason I can't, we can't, to break up reports to the Board, right? Is there?
Boy, it may make sense to just have, at least have, get a quick round of public and have our auditor have an opportunity to entertain any questions from the Board. That would be instructive if members of the public want to talk about the budget and want to know the outcome of the audit.
Okay. And I also would think...
Maybe we can rearrange after that.
Might be helpful to have the reports of the Business Manager and the Superintendent before the budget discussion.
So we'll move action items instead, down.
So we'll move discussion items to number six. I'll entertain a motion to do just that.
So moved?
Second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass, thank you. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay. Public. Communication. Hi, Carol.
Hey. I have a couple of brief last comments. I need this, um, from the superintendent, the essential work of the new school boards. And I'd like to ask the school board to adopt or ensure that the present and the future school boards operate efficiently.
We get a copy of that every time a new Board member comes on, and we ask them to look at it. Certainly, can't force them, but I certainly looked at mine, I imagine other people did. So, I'm not sure I'm understanding your request. Is there...
Well, you know, churches have their bibles, the boards have their bibles, you know?
And, and boards have their essential...
A document that brings everyone to their...
Right. I mean, I...
That isn't just a list, but it's actually a living working document within the school board.
Okay.
Lori?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Joanne, thank you.
So the Board was involved in some, a Board Retreat and some training with the Superintendent and the Administration, I believe it was in September. And the consultant's presentation was based on the essential work of school boards. From that, that day, I created goals, and the Board also, over time, created some goals that we're going to work on together. What you'll find later on in the meeting is that the Board's work plan references some of the components, like developing a vision, fiscal responsibility and so on, that really reflect the major areas that are contained within that book. So I want you to know that I, I think that's the link that this Board is taking seriously, and it is, it's a, it's a good standard for us to all, to reach for. And I, so I think that the work already that we're laying ahead of us is very much aligned with that.
Just as an aside, I also used it when we were formulating the Finance Committee as well.
And then, second, um... You know, I voiced my concerns before I left here and was there to make sure that voters' rights are not, not violated when this school board makes a decision to borrow deficit money. I know you had a lawyer's opinion, but I also had two lawyers' opinions, Neil Palbert and Jim Condos, who made the clear statement that you have to abide by, um, the law that says that voters approve borrowing for three years or less. And so if it's, if you're going to go that way again, I'm just asking for second opinions, more discussions, so that it's really clear why the Board has decided not to reach out to the voter and ask them if you can borrow the money as, as the last days. And I know there's adoption of that. Makes sense?
Yes.
The way that the, the deficit was included this year in the tax rate, Carol, is not from borrowing, but we're actually just raising more taxes to address it over three years?
Yeah, we would not be going out for any loan.
There's no interest being paid on that amount.
All right, thanks.
And that was just, I want to clarify for the other people in the audience who might be listening, that was a forthright decision of the Board to acknowledge the fact that we didn't want to put any more debt on the taxpayers in terms of additional interest to pay on top of that.
Okay. And then, the next one is that you gave this analysis of audited fund balances, but in my class of where did the fund balance go, this does not guarantee that the surpluses were carried forward as required by the law. And so, I would like the Board to request an analysis of the above fund balances totals being carried into budgets, because the audit doesn't represent proposed or actual budgets.
Yeah, it does.
No, it, it tallies them. It, there, it's a record of them, but, but the proposed budget is different because of the, the proposed, the projected, whereas these are, these are real numbers. These are actuals, all the audits.
May, anybody want to step up first? So, if you go back and into the annual reports, are you saying that you don't see these surpluses in the revenue side, in, in the annual reports?
No, neither do I see the margins that, that, the numbers that went to them. But I, I, I think I have the permission to get my questions answered now, but, but I just wanted to have the Board consider that these fund balances, you, you come on when it's a deficit, and it's very clear to see the deficit move forward. But the same path is still for surpluses. So when we go back, when we add three years, it's very difficult to determine, for instance... FY14, if you look at your audit, I didn't bring the audit tonight, because on, you already have a deficit of $450,000. And that $450,000 was a projected FY12 audited surplus for FY12. And it wasn't available three years ago.
I'm not sure that's true. Is that a true statement?
That's a true statement.
That it was from FY12?
It was from FY12. It was projected, but you never had a final audit. So that means that in 14, your revenues were short by that $450,000, which added to the deficit for that year, because you were expecting it, didn't...
Didn't get it. It didn't happen. Yep. Does that help?
It's beginning, but thank you.
And that's why we, I, I prefer not to project fund balances or deficits and put them into the next year. That's why there should be an audit available before we start budgeting. And then they're, then they're set in stone.
But the FY12 actual surplus was like $458. So, so the question is, the audit did come in with a surplus, even though it was very late. The projection really wasn't that far off, so why did it end up not making it into the actual? Where is that surplus that the auditors reported in the, in the budget? Thanks, I appreciate it. And, and just the last one. Just real quick, I'll present this to you. I was going to inform the Board that I was going to go to court to have a, a judge decide whether open meeting laws are being violated or not. And I believe that your policy, well, number one, school board policy can't trump Vermont statute. And the policy, as in public comment, it says the Chair will ask for comments on agenda items before action is, is taken by the Board. I've, I haven't experienced that yet, but it is in your policy to at least open it up for comments before you take action. But, um, Secretary of State Jim Condos, you know, told me when he was the Chair of the Burlington Council, he just put public comment at the end of every agenda item. And this is why, because open meeting laws, it says, in 16 VSA 554, it says, "A school board meeting shall be conducted in accordance with Vermont Open Meeting Law. Robert's Rules of Order shall govern the conduct of school board meetings. A school board shall afford a reasonable opportunity to any person in the school district to appear and express views," and this, this is what's important, "in regard to any matter considered by the school board." And this is another struggle of the school board, "and if requested to do so, shall give reasons for its actions in writing." And I just really would like the school board, now we have the new Chair, to, you know, work on presenting, you know, being accessible. And, and he started out, Condos started out to say, "There's nothing specific in the statutes regarding the school board chair."
Can I stop you?
Yes, you can.
I'm on board with what you're saying.
Okay.
Does that sound...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes, Lou?
Actually, it's on the heels of what Carol said, so I, I'm curious, and my, my public comment, it's twofold. The first is, you have the new footer on your agenda that talks about how you're, it's not a meeting of the public, but it's a public meeting. Many of us, if not most of us, are here to be participants in the conversation about debriefing the budget vote. Are you intending to, or will you allow the public to participate in that conversation? I don't know that any of us is able to express all of our thoughts and concerns right now because we haven't heard the conversation going on, but if we are only allowed to hum it now and not during that debriefing, then most of us should probably just go home.
Okay, I appreciate that question.
So I'm, I'm asking that, that you consider that. The Ferrisburg Board has agreed that if, if the Chair feels that the public participation in an, in an agenda item is important enough, then, then the public will be included.
Okay, well, that was, the question I was going to ask, is there an agenda amendment that we need to, need, need to make?
No, you just moved, you just moved the content up to acknowledge the fact that people were here and wanted to participate in that discussion.
Right.
So I think we already acknowledge your concern with it.
Right, you moved it up, which is different from assuring us that you'll allow us to participate in the conversation. Moving it up on the agenda just changes when it's discussed by you, the Board. My question is, are you going to allow us to participate in your conversation?
Yes.
Can you comment, please?
Please.
That would be appropriate anytime the Board is making a decision. The public has a right to comment on that, but there is a difference between comment and participation. This is not, this is not a public meeting. This is not a forum where you have dialogue, but you do want to hear from the public concerning their views of the, of the budget and any discussion that the Board has had, especially if we're going to be making decisions. So there will be times during the meeting that you could stop and ask, if you, if you see that there are people who want to make comment, you can stop and, and after the Board deliberates and finishes the point, to, to solicit that public comment. But again, it's not a back and forth dialogue between the public and the Board.
Okay.
And then the, the second thing I would have comment on, I, I had the same conversation at the Ferrisburg Board meeting, and this is not, I do not at all intend this to sound like Monday morning quarterbacking where I'm criticizing actions that the Board took. I'm observing that I think a reason both the Vergens Board budget and the Ferrisburg budget didn't pass is because the communication probably wasn't as robust as it could have been. And, and that is incumbent upon me as well, being in the audience, saying, gee, I think you should do, or have you thought about doing? It came up at the annual meeting when I was asking Stephanie, is anyone going to be presenting to those of us who are here what you've done for cutting? I mean, I know what you've done, because I've been at the meetings, but there were people at that annual meeting who hadn't been here, who hadn't seen the write-up that talks about the cuts. And you, you did read some of it in Stephanie's report, but there were not dollar amounts listed. So, it, last year, there was such an impassioned discussion around our budget numbers that were taking place all across here, in front porch form. Not all of it was, you know, useful or positive, but I really feel like we, as a community... but I really feel like we, as a community, let the rest of the community down, there wasn't even an outline in the email newsletter that goes out to all of the families here walking us through the numbers, because as a wise friend of mine said, if you can communicate to the parents, that's a voting block right there. So the fact that we didn't get anything really tangible, and honestly, Neil, I don't know if you, I didn't read every single front porch forum, so if you posted something about the budget that gave hard and fast numbers, I apologize, I missed it, but I just feel like we had the report in the Addison Independent, or you had to be here, and I think collectively we missed some opportunities, and I would just encourage us as a team here to make sure that in preparation for the next vote, we're far more explicit and there are far more avenues of communication that go out.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, hi.
I think I might as well piggyback on that, it makes sense.
Uh huh.
I have a statement.
Would you mind announcing yourself, I should have had Lou.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Carol as well, I apologize.
I'm Chris Wykoff, I'm an English teacher, I'm also a local taxpayer and a parent. I have a statement here, and I would like to open by explaining that this statement represents the views of the majority of the faculty and staff here at the UHS, and their signatures are attached to the statement. Some teachers did not wish to sign because the original budget either cut or negatively impacted their positions, so they understand and did not feel they could support the original budget. This year's budget defeat was disheartening to the faculty and staff here at Virgin's Union High School. We share the community's concern about the need for an eleven percent increase, but we feel that many voters do not know that the budget increase was due substantially to past fiscal management-related mistakes, state mandates, and prior commitments made during the budget process, not by overspending in the school. More importantly, many voters did not know that the fifteen sixteen budget already included reductions in both faculty and staff that will negatively impact the educational opportunities students have here at the UHS. Reducing the budget any further would have an even more devastating impact on our programming and in turn, the education of our students. With this in mind, the undersigned faculty and staff believe that the board should submit the same budget figure, with the understanding, though, there will be a clear plan for increased communication with the voters. We know that the board has mentioned sending out an FAQ sheet to help explain the budget issues to voters, which we strongly support, and the teachers here, especially those that are local residents, would like to help as well. Last year, we ran a very successful phone bank, which we'd be willing to do again. We would also be willing to write informative letters to the editors of our local papers, as many of the letters that have been printed recently seem to be one-sided and misinformed. With all of us working together, we firmly believe that an educated public will pass the proposed budget Lauren has brought up for a revamp. Thank you.
Educated. Chris?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Madam Chairman, do we need to make a motion that we can?
Do you mind introducing yourself, Elizabeth?
I'm Elizabeth Armstrong, I'm from West Addison.
Thank you.
And thank you for that report. Do we need to make a motion that we can be involved in this budget during during the meeting tonight, that we can give some input?
No.
Okay, well, I'll give some input now, then. I've been running for the Addison Independent, and you know my stand, and I talked to the business manager last time and dropped it in front of you, we need to cut this budget. You've buried us in taxes for years and years and years. Sorry, we're at the cliff, we're not going over. And we need to come down ten thousand dollars, around ten thousand dollars per student. Whoa, I know that's half the budget, but you know what, you've been charging us fifty percent more taxes for years and years and years, and you just keep adding on and keep adding on.
Can I can I just stop here real quick? We haven't been overcharging the taxpayers fifty percent.
Oh, yeah, you're fifty percent, we're one of the highest taxed people in the nation, it's out there, it's documented, so don't sit there and tell me you didn't, it's documented.
Okay, if you don't.
Not to be argumentative, but it's there, the facts are there.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure the board understands us.
They're not here, Elizabeth, they're not here in front of us right now, right?
No, they're not here in front of you, but you know, you're not going to get away with saying, you know, that's not going to go with me, and it's not going to go with the taxpayers. Teachers are struggling, they put a lot into the school, I think that they're way overpaid in lots of areas, probably going to have to make some bigger cuts. I think they struggle to give a good education in lots of the rooms, I've been in them, I know what they have to endure with students, but we're at a point now, we've had it, the two schools disconsolidated, and one was Bridgewater, and I can't think of the other town, and they came down to ten thousand dollars. I know this is a big high school, but you are now really going to have to consolidate down to around ten thousand dollars per student, so get ready, because I'm going to fight tooth and nail with everything I got with petitions and signatures and vote downs on this budget till it comes down to where it ought to be. I think the best way for you to do that probably is to start making a plan. If you tell the taxpayers, if you tell me as a taxpayer, okay, we know we've got a real deal, some major cuts here, this is our plan, so many dollars every year in the next five years to bring this down into a really good structured tax economy we can afford, we might vote the budget through, but you're no longer going to cut ten thousand or twenty thousand or a hundred thousand and get away with it, we're not going to put up with it anymore, we're all done. And I really appreciate everybody's effort that comes on this board, the struggle to help us taxpayers, I know you're all trying to do a good job, don't take it personal because we're ready for major tax cuts, work with us. We are going to have these major tax cuts, and we're not going to put up with any kind of this kind of budget ever again, so I suggest a really good plan and some really good tax cuts.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anybody else? Nancy? Oh, would you mind introducing?
Nancy, I'm a parent and taxpayer, and I apologize, Duan, for not giving you that via email. It was the exit pool that we did last year, and so I think a lot of it probably is still up to date, people would feel the same. I have to have the reverse opinion of this woman, and that is that we're doing a great job here, and I am worried about the education our kids are going to get in the future if we do cut the budget. We're going to lose kids, people that can afford it will go to other schools, and will slowly see the school just crumble. I have been a member of this community all my life, and have worked here thirty-five years. I have never felt this pessimistic about the future of this school, and I hate to say that. So again, I can't stress enough, trying to communicate to the community what we're doing here and how we can hopefully explain the eleven percent and and have them support this this year. Thank you.
So. Mr. A. M. Peish, although that's not who you are, I know.
This is Jesse Rushley, Jesse has spent a considerable amount of time with the staff over the past couple of months completing three years of audits, so his partner boss is not here this evening, but I think Jesse is the best person to handle this stuff. Jesse?
Thank you, board members, thank you, Duan, Tanya, and Donna Conferent for helping us out and completing these audits for fiscal year fourteen. I'd like to start with the financial report for June two thousand and fourteen, I'm just going to touch on key items, but please feel free to interject, we can discuss whatever you like to talk about, if not, I'll just keep moving and go from there. So on page one, we talk about the the auditor's report, and it's the same as we did fiscal year thirteen, in which we are giving two opinions, we are giving an adverse opinion, and then we're giving a unmodified, which is a clean opinion. And the reason is because we're dealing with two different governmental accounting standards require us to present kind of like two sets of financials in the financial statements, two different bases of accounting, one's more long-term approach, one is current resources. So if we jump ahead onto page, page two, it's the summary of opinions is talking about what's adverse and what's a clean opinion. So the governmental activities is an adverse opinion, and the only reason why it's adverse is because the high school has not capitalized all their assets that have more than one year of life on their assets, and we've got to go back like twenty, thirty years, like building. We have gone through with management, and we do have financial assets on the book, capital assets on the books from July two thousand and twelve and forward, plus any assets that had any debt attached to them, because on page four, it would kind of skew, it would kind of look, the statement would look a little skewed if we didn't do that. So on page four, we have a spot that's capital assets, so there's building, construction process, et cetera. And then we also, down in the liability section, we talk about the long-term liabilities, and if we didn't include the capital assets, it would look fine to have all the debt related to those assets, but not have the assets themselves, so we felt it was important to get those on there. So that's the only reason why we have to give an adverse opinion on these financials, other than that, it's a clean opinion. And I believe management, I'm sorry, yes.
So by that you mean, because we don't have like the depreciation of this building going back for a thirty-year term, that you can't give an unmodified opinion?
Right, all the costs, you'd have to go back and get all the costs and all these things, because they need to be depreciated over the life of those assets, so.
How how far back would we have to go?
I believe twenty years.
Oh, my gosh.
So we'll continue to have that adverse opinion for a few more years.
Yeah, and I think management is working on building that up, so I think eventually you're going to get to the point where you have a complete clean opinion, but at least by doing this, we can say it's a clean opinion with the exception of the capital assets. So I think, as we did for fiscal year thirteen, I think it is a improvement, I think it gives clarity in showing that these financials are clean in our opinion.
Just to clarify if I may, in the find schedule of findings and responses with regard to this item, it it indicates that amounts should be recorded at historical cost whenever possible.
Yes.
It also indicates that the school plans to establishing and maintaining capital assets records and bring the financial statements into compliance with GASB thirty-four in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, so I guess I'd like to look at management and say, is that in fact our plan, and is it based on historical, or can we do it based on insurance value, or some other way to short circuit this process?
I believe you can base it on insurance value, I'm not sure if, I mean, there's probably records around of when this was actually built, and but I don't, I mean, I'm not sure how long ago that was.
Nineteen fifty-nine.
Okay. I would have to do a lot of research on that, but the appraiser could come in and give you a value on your building as is, I don't know if that would appease the auditor or not.
It really should be cost.
Cost.
It should be cost in one way or another, and I know it.
So that would.
So that's why I had two questions. We're making a representation by management that we plan to meet the standard in two thousand and fifteen, so my question is, how? We don't, okay, we don't have a plan yet, which is why I was focusing on the statement that says, whenever possible, and so if it's not possible, are there alternative ways to clean this issue up and be able to move on, because it has been hanging as the basis for an adverse opinion for several years.
I mean, the only way to get is to get all your assets at cost on there, so I don't know a way around it, unfortunately.
So so the words of whenever possible, are those GASB words?
Right.
Whenever possible, it says the historical cost whenever possible.
I'm sorry, we're jumping ahead.
I'm sorry, it's on page three of the.
Of the additional report?
Schedule findings and responses.
So if we had the bond issues that were voted in to build the building and to do the additions and the improvements, that would be actual cost, wouldn't it? So we can just research what those bond issues were and plug those in?
Yeah, if we can find record dating back to nineteen fifty-nine.
We only have to go back twenty years.
Okay, twenty, but.
So otherwise, it's going to take us twenty years before we're going to fix it.
Are there any other schools that are in this position, or have been in this position, and then reversed theirselves out?
Yes, there are a lot of schools and towns that are in the same position. Back in two thousand and four, governmental accounting standards, I won't get too in-depth with this.
Thank you.
In two thousand and four, accounting standards required governmentals, towns, schools to go into this presentation, not just showing current resources, which has been in the past, but to show the long-term assets and long-term fixed assets, the long-term debt in this other statement. So a lot of schools haven't, you know, since they were never required to show that before, and a lot of towns, they never kept those records. So once two thousand and four came along, that's when they started requiring it, some towns and schools implemented it, some didn't, so there there are a lot that are still not in compliance, so they're still, given as they come to seem.
My my question is actually focused on, maybe Tanya could collaborate with someone who actually has gone back and done it, gotten their historical cost right.
I would have to ask my constituents at Vasbo to see if they have, if anybody has actually done this.
Okay, Jesse might know somebody too.
Actually, the partner, Chris Guley, recommended that school districts that have as much research as we do to do, hire somebody to come in and do that work.
So, real simpleton here, I'm trying to figure out what's what's that word mean? You're telling me that it's not an official audit because we don't have those records, is that what you're saying? But it's a, what, I'm trying to figure out what the value, if it's not official, what's the value of it, what are we, you know, that, because I, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Never done this before, so.
So in the past, we've always given an adverse opinion, which means we cannot give a clean opinion, which means these financials are not compliant with the standards, with accounting principles.
Okay, with accounting principles, and who sets up the accounting principles?
That is the 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 GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board.
Okay, who just in two thousand and four changed everything?
Yes.
Okay.
They changed the rules.
They changed the rules like government always does. You just basically give somebody a purpose. What I'm asking is, though, other than the, I don't, like the fool that I normally am, I didn't grab the stuff from last month, so I don't have that in front of me, what is the the purpose of the audit, what 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 is the idea, we don't have, we don't have the the historical costs of this building and all the other capital assets, that's fine, okay, I understand that, and therefore, you can't have an official audit or signed, sealed, and delivered because of a government agency that says it's not the way it's supposed to be done, because they've come up with a way that has to be done. But my question is, as a layman, how does that affect me and my bi-annually tax pay? Because the amount that they paid for the building in nineteen fifty-nine doesn't mean nothing to me or my children in two thousand and fifteen, you understand what I'm saying? So what I'm asking is, or what I'm confused about is the the your audit on the financial, the money going back and forth, not the bricks in the building, the money going back and forth, and, you know, I may be jumping ahead here, but after my town meeting on Tuesday, last Tuesday, it seemed to be more important to to the farmers and to the people who live in my town, Patton, which was the dollars, not the bricks, not not the the lawnmower, you know what I'm saying? So so that's what I'm more worried about, and I think maybe, I'm, once again, I'm I'm kind of lame, not a well-educated individual at times for our social life, but I think most people who are out in the public right here is worried about the dollars, we're not worried about how much this building cost in nineteen fifty-nine, we're not worried about what the upgrade when we've got the new new wing put in, or when we just put all the new the new additions or new upgrades and the fixing of the of the dilapidated boiler system we have in this building, okay? So I I think that's fine, and I'm sorry to say that the nonofficial or whatever the fancy word, your twenty-five cent word, I haven't got paid, so I can't spend that much money on a word today, but I'm more worried about where the finances are, the dollars, is that is that being complied to what the standards are standing, not, I could, I personally could care less that we not, we don't have it fully to the GASB rules, because that's something that we need to work on, we know that.
Can I, can I interrupt you? I think he's going to get to it.
Okay.
There's another one. There's some more.
Thank you, Richard.
Go ahead, Jesse.
So pages four and five discuss about this, if you're government-wide, which is talking about the whole entity. Then on page fi, uh, page six, the balance sheet, this is where we're talking more current resources, we're talking about more this year, we're not looking at long-term stuff, we're not looking at buildings, we're not looking at long-term debt. We're focusing more on current resources, current year income expenses. Now this stuff is a clean opinion, this is more what you're concerned about. So that's, that's why we did this, because last year, two thousand thirteen, we did change it so that way it's not an overall, everything, we can't give an opinion on anything, or we can't give a, it's not in compliance with everything. We're saying that little piece is not compliant, but everything else is, which is pretty much your day-to-day operations. Anything on the balance sheet you want to discuss?
So on, on page six, the major asset is due from other funds?
Yes. It's mostly due from the construction fund. There was, there was a note on the roof.
Yep.
So that money is going to be owed back to the general fund. Yeah, so the general fund, due from, due from, yes, it's mostly from the construction fund.
The checking funds, the assets. Hardly going to pay.
They have a liability.
It did, this is last year, this is the twenty fourteen audit, so that was the big chunk of money that went through to fix the roof, the six hundred thousand dollars.
The bond money?
Yeah, the other, the other fund was the bond. We chose to get a short-term loan to fix the roof, and then we paid that loan off with the bond money.
Okay.
So that's the other source.
Okay. I think we'll let that go for now.
You'll see all of that in fifteen.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Page seven is just a, it kind of reconciles between the balance sheet and then that statement position, which it just, one between those two bases of accounting. Then page eight is the, the income statement. And there's another one further down that I'd rather focus on that one, it's more with the general fund. But this is pretty much your current, current year activity, your revenues and the expenditures. Now down at the bottom, the general fund, we're showing a deficit for fit thirteen, which we discussed about at the last time we were here. The general fund has a deficit of five hundred forty-three thousand. Now the year before that, there was a surplus of about five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Now, when budgets are being prepared, you have to go by the last approved budget, the last approved budget. So when they're preparing their budgets, they're going by the most recent budget, which was back in two thousand twelve, when there was a surplus. So you're kind of budgeting for a surplus, but it wasn't there. So, so there was a deficiency this way, this year in the general fund. And we could touch that a little bit more a little later, there's one that talks about the general fund a little bit more. Then on page ten, nine is just another reconciliation. Page ten is the hot lunch fund, it's like the balance sheet for the hot lunch fund. And there is a, there is a deficit on the hot lunch fund, which it's, it was there in thirteen as well. On page eleven, which is more the, the revenues and the expenses for the hot lunch fund. And for fiscal year fourteen, the loss was about fourteen thousand, so it's adding to the, it's adding to the deficit that was already there. So the deficit for the hot lunch is a hundred fifty-six. And I, I believe, I'm not sure what management is, I think they're thinking about maybe doing transfers, or they're thinking about addressing this to hopefully alleviate this in the future years. It's probably going to take a few years to, to work through it. Page twelve is just the cash flow, just showing how the cash in and out, how that kind of went through the hot lunch fund. Page thirteen are fiduciary funds, these are trust funds, student activity account and the principal's account are, trust funds is, yeah, so the trust fund are scholarships accounts, the agency fund is the student activities in the principal's account. And then page fourteen is just showing the income that the, the trust funds were earning during the year, the interest that was earned and the scholarships that were paid out.
Yeah.
What's the problem with the sort of carry forward deficit for the hot lunch programs in other schools with which you work?
I haven't seen, I've seen, I've seen both sides, both ways, both sides, so it all depends on how it's, it's operated. Some schools, what they do is they'll appropriate or transfer money from the general fund to the hot lunch to pay for it because it's for the students in the long run, it's all for the students.
Right.
And then starting on page fifteen are the notes, I definitely won't bore you with all these verbiage. If there's anything specific you'd like to discuss, we can definitely discuss it. On page twenty-six is where they start talking about the, the debt. I don't think we'll go into any detail unless you want to. It's more of the detail about the debt. More detail of the debt, the bonds and the notes.
Where are they, Jesse?
On page twenty-six. Just, it, these are just pretty much the required disclosures that the government requires on every audit.
So on twenty-six, we did not yet show the two point eight.
Yes, that happened after, that happened in fiscal year fifteen.
Okay.
Now, I believe we do disclose that event happening on page twenty-nine. The second paragraph, it's the last note, it's note fifteen, the second paragraph talks about that two point eight million, where the roof got combined into the two, total two point eight million dollar bond.
So that will show up on the schedule of long-term liabilities?
That will next, yeah, and just for your fifteen, when you have your audit done. Then on page thirty, it just goes into a budget to actual for the general fund. You want to discuss any of these, any points on the budget to actual for the general fund?
So, and they didn't, just because, you know, we had interest from the public in this issue, so there is a budget to actual report in the audit?
Yes, there is.
And it takes the approved budget under which we were operating?
Yes, the first one, which is the original and final budget, that's the one that the voters approved. We have to make sure that matches.
Yep.
So at the bottom where it says estimated balance forward, that was from, that's what was originally budgeted for, they were budgeting that, there was a four hundred fifty thousand dollar balance forward. Now that was actually from the twelve audit, because you, your budget is based on your last set of financial, last audit.
Okay.
Because you don't want to estimate, because you don't know where it can be in a year from now.
So when the question arose earlier about where do we show carry forwards, this would be an example of where we're showing a carry forward?
If there's a surplus, it will show, if there's, if there's a surplus, then we show it there too. So this is what we're, what management was rolling forward.
Page thirty, when we get a chance.
Any other questions on the financials?
Uh, yeah. So I'm looking at this budgetary comparison, and I don't think I see the budget number. And I'm wondering, how could I get the budget number? It's not that ten million, two thirty-nine, I don't think. It's not what we passed.
It's the, you gotta take it, the vocational program, because that is voted, but it's voted throughout the, the whole district. So you gotta, you gotta include the vocational, because part of it is voted here, part of it is voted, but it's all really into the school. That's that.
So, so if I took the ten million, two thirty-nine and subtracted the seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, I should come up to the budget number?
Then you have to include what the voters approved for their piece, but there is, I think about three hundred thousand dollars, I gotta look at that number again.
Three hundred thousand, their piece, I'm not sure I'm understanding what you're saying.
About three hundred thousand, I don't have it right in front of me, what the.
No, I, 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 I don't understand, I'm not talking about the number, I'm talking about the understanding of what this, what you were trying to say. So could you say it again? I'm sorry. So, so I, I would like to get back to the budget number.
Yep.
Yes. So I'm going to take the vocational program and subtract it out of here, and you said I need to add back?
Yes. You need to add back in the actual amount that you, the, the school has to pay towards the vocational center, because the vocational gets paid in two different sections. You have your obligation, and then the state sends an on-behalf payment.
Okay. All right, and you broke that out in this year's annual report.
And I broke that out in this year's.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, Tanya.
You're welcome.
If there's nothing else, we'll go to the additional required report, which has our, our more significant findings, our significant deficiencies and material weaknesses, just our bigger findings. And the first two, starting on page three, the report just says what we looked at, we do not give an opinion on this report, this is just looking at controls. This is, this is really kind of separate from the numbers, this is more controls that are in place in the school. You have a question?
So what that means is that for this additional required report, there aren't GASP standards that we're using to compare the schools' accounting to.
Right.
Rather, this is your assessment of areas of strength and weakness.
Right. Unless it's something that the government kind of requires, unless there's standards that they, you know, like capital assets, you've got to have your capital assets. So that's something in that situation, so it's kind of a, it's kind of like if we come across a, a weakness in control, they can go in here, but it's also considering any non-compliance, if we come across any non-compliance with the accounting standards. So the first two are the same that we had from the meeting back in November, when we came in November, which was the showing capital asset records and then segregating the duties in the, the student activities in the principal's account. The one I'd like to focus a little more on is eight three, is the, sorry.
Before we jump, I, I would be interested in knowing from administration whether we've dealt with segregation of duties for the agency cash funds. Going to what people are interested in, have we dealt with that?
Yes, we have, and we, you saw part of that in your internal control checklist, and you, we also have procedures now for procurement, which lists the segregation of duties.
Thank you. I'm sorry, thank you.
So on page four, which is the finding A dash three, which is the lack of approval of cash transfers, we noted that one person has the ability to transfer money, but without a second person approving it. And we feel it's important for there to be two sets of eyes on large transfers. Dual authorization of wire transfers is an integral part of internal control to ensure that only legitimate transfers are happening. So we recommend that the school adopt a policy for authorizing bank transfers, we also recommend that there are limits on amounts that an individual can authorize without a second approval. It's just more to help strengthen controls. And then if, if the transfer that's over a certain, whatever limit you want to assess to it, we recommend that a second individual be required to provide approval, which is what I said. And so each one of these findings require a response from management. And the response is in fiscal year two thousand sixteen, the process for transferring funds will be the responsibility of the elected treasurer of the district, and the school board will apply policy outlining the requirements of these transfers. So management is, and is looking at addressing these findings.
Just to, so people in the audience who maybe didn't hear it at our annual meeting, this is something we specifically spoke with, with the new elected treasurer, Greg Burdick.
I'm interested in, who's our new treasurer? Name?
Burdick, Greg Burdick.
So there are two letters that, any other questions on the additional required report? We have two letters. The first one, about, let me put the fourth paragraph down, it just, it highlights that significant audit findings. We've already discussed the major findings, this is just if we have, we didn't come across any issues with doing the audit. So if you had any issues with performing the audit, this is where we would look, not necessarily with controls, but for us to perform the audit. And we had no issues with getting information or working with management, they were very cooperative, and for us to really push this one through in three months and get you guys caught up was, it was great help from management, I do really appreciate it. And the last report, which is our management letter, these are the, the smaller issues that we found that could potentially use, that we feel could use improvement if management feels. They were all the same, they were all the same with the exception of one. We've had it in years before, it's, sometimes it's a hit or miss whether we come across this, not whether we come across it, but whether it's done or not. And that is the review of bank reconciliations. The bank reconciliations are being done, but there's no, during the year, fiscal year fourteen that we're looking at, some of them didn't have documentation of approval of reviewing the bank reconciliation. So that second set of eyes looking at the bank reconciliation is a good control to have, especially over cash. So the bank recs were being performed, but there wasn't a second person reviewing the bank reconciliations in that year.
I'm actually currently reviewing them and signing off on them for this year.
Someone else is preparing?
Yes.
Yeah, and again, all these things were from when we were in, for fiscal year fourteen, so, you know, it's, management really hasn't had a chance to even, I mean, that stuff, that's, you know, we, we reported most of the stuff the last time we came, and management's been really active, proactive on it, and, and the board as well, so I really appreciate, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anybody in the audience have a question?
Uh, just wanted, can I make a quick statement? I just want to thank you for demystifying the audit, that was the most cogent presentation I've ever been given.
Thank you.
Of exactly what the audit, audit tells me, and it was very helpful, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick little question. Uh, shall I need to stand up and hear me? I'm Elizabeth Armstrong again from West Addison, I have BS in accounting and taxation. Tell them more about capital assets. If they don't keep track of their capital assets, to me, that's every single computer, every single thing that's in our school qualifies for a capital asset, whatever it is, the building, et cetera. If we were to lose it all out of some horrible catastrophe, how would they account for it? And I think it's a positive because Ms. Amber was over here, I think that's her name, said she was concerned about losing the building. Well, how much is this building worth? You know, I think it's important for the public to know what their capital assets are worth. And I, I don't expect anybody on the board to know all about capital assets, but get on the internet and look it up. Thank you.
It would be my recommendation that when we, starting of next year, the board will adopt an amount to be advised as a capital asset. So you won't have to count every book, chair, computer, monitor, you, you need to set an amount that will be a capital asset, and then we can track it from there.
Yeah, and I'll definitely make it a little, like you said, Tanya, by having that threshold, it'll make it easier going back and.
Yes.
Anything under whatever dollar amount you set, it's, not to worry about it, it's just, it's really the bigger items that are, that last more than a year are the items you want to get, just to show on here.
Great.
Thank you.
So do we want to make sure that we're also insured for at least that amount too?
Yes.
The whatever number, you know.
Anybody else? Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, Jesse.
Oh, Carol, excuse me.
So page thirteen.
So page thirty, so you said, I don't know if that's the column for the original budget, that ends in a deficit of four fifty, four hundred and fifty thousand? So that's, that is my question. Where did it go? Why did an original proposed budget fall in deficit?
It's because they proposed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a surplus from a year that did, it did not happen. They did not have that surplus. So when they proposed it, they included it in their local revenues. It never happened. So automatically, your budget for your revenues was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars short, and your revenue, the revenues did not match the expenditure budget because of that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's why, it's very scary to propose a surplus or a deficit unless you have an audit. You're setting yourself up.
Two years behind when you're proposing, usually, and this year, your audits are thirteen to be done, but when the budgets were being proposed at that time, the twelve audit was done, and that budget, that ending fund did have a surplus of that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's what you have to go by. You have to go by audit, the state said you have to go by audited financial statements to use as your report.
Twelve wasn't done yet.
Okay.
Twelve was not done for fifteen. It was not done yet. The eleven, that would've been eleven.
Yes.
The four hundred and fifty was a projection of FY twelve.
And the actual was actually like seventy-eight thousand, according to this, that Tanya prepared for us. Deficit of twenty, seventy-eight. Is that okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Reports to the boards, student representatives.
So girl state applications, which is run through the American Legion, went in today. All junior girls are able to apply and are called back for interviews, which are happening tomorrow. And they will send two or three delegates from our school potentially to the girl state convention later this year in June. Ms. Stepp and Ms. Taylor's Southern History trip is taking place the third week of this March. I am personally attending. It'll be a week-long excursion down to Georgia through D.C. and exploring the South and American history, which will be very neat. Small committees and National Honor Society members have been working with Mr. Stetzel on creating a teacher review and feedback form, and have been communicating with high school teachers and staff over the past couple weeks, and we are going to begin drafting later this week. Do you wanna take over, or Josh?
So my modest citizenship class was visited by Representative Lanfier and Representative Van Wyck this week, on Friday, actually. Just to background that class, it's basically talking about how our government works and how it means to be a citizen in these times day. So voting rights, we go all over the Constitution, we do all that good stuff. So that was very enlightening to have two representatives from the State House come into our class and talk to us for seventy-five minutes, and talk about what they do on a daily basis and how it affects students like us now. March Madness Week, which is next week, it's like a spirit week, so school activities, et cetera, and it's all run by student council, which me and Tia are a part of. Mid-quarter reports come out soon. I believe that's either next week or the week after. We don't have School Friday, it's in service day, so short week for us. The UVM math test administered is Wednesday, this Wednesday.
Ms. Ambrose will be administering the test. All students who have taken its integrated three or above are able to take it. It's through UVM, it's no calculator, optional test, so.
It's good fun.
It's a big deal.
Is that the same test that students who are admitted are required to take before they can register?
No.
No?
No.
Purely a competition.
Oh, it's that one. Oh, I hear that.
So spring sports are starting up, even though it feels like winter sports just pretty much got over. They'll start March twenty-third for the most part, but captains' practices and open gyms have been being run for softball, baseball, track. Kids are hearing back from colleges, and scholarships are underway. VSAC scholarships were due last Friday, so the guidance office was very busy last Friday. And juniors will be preparing for senior work, and they'll be attending the college fair coming up. I also wanted to make one point and go off of what Ms. Ambrose said, more to the taxpayers than the school board. And me, as me and Ms. Thompson were having a discussion today, we were talking about how as people and as teachers of our school get cut, that gives students more and more of an appealing look towards school choice, which can be very detrimental to our school as our numbers are declining. So I think we really need to take that into account and think about that. As these teachers are being cut, we can also lose a lot of students.
I'd like to piggyback on that if I could. And I don't mean to put this any way, shape, or form against anyone here. Just wanna put that out there now. I personally believe that the education level at the school is higher than those of others. I respect your opinion, ma'am, about saying how it's lower. But, and you said you've been in the classroom before. I'm in the classroom every day. I understand how the teachers perform on a daily basis, how they deal with specific students that may be a problem. Mr. Wykoff, I wouldn't be at this table right now if it wasn't for him. I took his public speaking class. I probably wouldn't have the guts to talk right now. Ms. Kerkaldi, she was up for the Roland ship. That was a hundred thousand dollars I was gonna come to this school. Ms. Olivera wrote me a letter of recommendation for the Coast Guard Academy for the summer program. I would be the first virgin student to go to a military academy if I'm accepted, and that letter was tremendous. Now, I can vouch, I can't vouch, but if I had a list of teachers in front of me, I could write you a page, page and a half about every single one, and how they've personally influenced my life. Mr. Orzak back there, I'm in his personal finance class right now, he's gonna keep me from going bankrupt when I'm older. Frau, Frau Capes, she's always there if I need to talk to somebody about school, if it's a rough day. She's always open arms. Any of these students here, like I said, you give me a list of students, I'll back every single one up. And I'm not speaking for myself, I'm speaking for the student sub-virgins, 'cause that's what I was brought here to do. So I just wanted to say that.
That's exactly what I'd like to hear. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We are virgin students, and we are very proud of the school that we attend and the community that we represent. And we wanna see not only this school, but this community prosper for students, teachers, and taxpayers for the foreseeable future.
Any questions?
I actually, I actually have a question. Emily, right?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. The teacher review and evaluations, who, how are you, how did that come about?
Mr. Stetzel and actually Lee Shory approached, just at a National Honor Society meeting about a month ago, about creating kind of a universal form that students could take, you know, either halfway through the semester, at the end of the semester, that could in turn be given back to that teacher as, you know, how did they feel, you know, what went well in the class, what, you know, what they didn't feel was great or helped them learn. And we're kind of in the revising and editing stage now, and we've been communicating with some teachers who in the building in different departments have existing forms and feedback sheets.
Okay.
And we've been working with them. It was a committee, I think there's about five or six of us, we signed up, and we've been meeting for, you know, a call back, a callback block once a week for the past month. So it's been neat.
So the idea is to have a school-wide evaluation for each student to complete?
Yes. And it wouldn't be mandatory, and if a teacher didn't feel like it would be necessary in their classroom, they wouldn't have to use it. But we're going to encourage the teachers, you know, hand it out to their students.
Awesome.
I could also just add, it's not part of the evaluation process for teachers, so it really is just for the individual teacher to use to hopefully improve what they're doing in their classroom, and also continue what they're doing well, just to get that feedback from students.
Great. Great. Thanks.
Anything else?
And does anybody have any questions of the students? They're pretty amazing. Thank you.
Nice job.
Principals.
You got my report.
Okay.
And I don't have a whole lot to add. The students did a good job of summarizing the events from the student.
I don't think we got a report.
It went out today.
Report. It's right after the screening.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I got four twenty. After I got in my car to drive home.
You weren't checking your email while you were driving, were you, Neil?
I could add a couple things to that. So we have a group that's working on the personalized learning plans, which is something that students seventh through twelve are gonna be required to do, if I remember correctly, November two thousand seventeen. We're looking to pilot that. So we have a group that's put together a form. There's one student in each morning meeting who will be filling out the form and those sorts of things over the next month, roughly. I have those electronically. So anyway, because in the fall, our hope is that every student will develop one by November. So, and it looks at, you know, not only what are their goals academically, but what are their goals even outside of school, whether it be sports, or career, or whatever that might be. But it's something that the state is mandating.
Right. Act seventy-seven.
Yes, it is part of Act seventy-seven.
You're, you're, you're working on creating a template? Is that what you were saying?
Right. So the state of Vermont created a template, and the group used that as sort of background for creating one for us to use. So, and then we'll see how, you know, how it gets filled out and make adjustments from there and, you know.
And you said your goal is that all, what grade will have theirs?
So in the fall, seventh and ninth graders are supposed to have them by November something. But our plan is to have all of our students, because it seems silly to have just a few students working on that when really it would be, we'd be working with all of our staff on the professional development around it. So why not have all of our students have a professional learning plan? Or a personal learning plan, sorry.
Will there be professional development? Once the template is gyrated, are you guys gonna get together in the summer and?
Most likely, yes. Yeah, it's a continuing.
There's tools in it, and assessments, sort of inventories that students can take, and we'll be reviewing those with faculty. The idea to pilot is so that the morning meeting advisor can work with that one single student, or more if they choose, and determine where they had, where they had some tension, what they needed to do to roll this out with students. So the pilot is designed to help us develop the kinds of PD we need to, we need to offer.
Are you still talking about the PLP?
Yeah. And the idea of a PLP, you know, there's some misunderstanding about personalized learning, and it's certainly intended to more actively engage students in what they're interested in learning about, and their own personal goals. But that can change. I mean, what a seventh grader might think they want to be when they grow up is gonna look very different than an eleventh or twelfth grader. But the idea of personalization is really to put students in charge of their own goal setting, and to have, help students understand where they need to improve. So, you know, all students need to achieve proficiency. That's part of our proficiency-based graduation system that needs to be implemented by the graduating class of two thousand twenty. So, but it's personalizing education from the perspective of the student, putting them in charge of understanding, where am I now in terms of where I need to get to be proficient, and what do I need to do to get there? And so it's individualizing that for each student. It's not necessarily helping a student achieve their career goal, although that is part of it, too. Jeff?
I think it would be great if we could see some samples of what those look like, one. And two, that that would, I understand we can't have names associated with this, but I think it's an example of the type of information that we should be striving to communicate about what we're doing. It doesn't mean anything to the general public until they see it. I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah. Well, we've made, we've made presentations about the PBGRs, and this goes hand in hand with the PBGRs. The state has gotten on board with that, so the PLP, it's all going to be one initiative. And we, I believe, I'd much rather be having presentations about that at this board, at these board meetings than what we've been concentrating on.
I guess my, my point is, our annual report needs to reflect these as examples of what we're paying for and what our students are doing.
Yep.
So that, that's, that's where I'd like to go with that. We need to communicate what it is.
Well, by this time next year, or, and by the time that the annual report is being drafted next year, all our students will have, will have filled out a personalized learning plan. So, yeah, it would be great to do that.
And then a related question related to your report, you note that S-Back testing is starting. I'm sort of aghast to see that it will take five days for each grade to complete.
Yep. Yep.
They most likely won't be testing the entire day.
Right.
Because that would be too much for students to try to do, you know, so we could squeeze it into less days, but then they'd be doing it all day and.
It's between nine and eleven hours of testing for each grade level.
Spread out over five days.
Right. There's a math portion, different, different ELA portions, classic, or performance tasks.
I, I understand it's, it's online. What I'm wondering if, is if there are two, there's some way for the board and then in turn the community?
It's actually going to be an ANW topic for all board members to get exposure to, and you will be getting the fifth grade items and see how well you do. Are you smarter than a fifth grader?
You might remember, I mean, we gave you all the links last year, because we piloted it last year. So everybody in, every, every adult in the district piloted, took the test last year, and grades seven, grades eight, and grades eleven piloted last year. We were the pilot, we were one of the pilot sites, so we did not take DCAPs last year in the area of ELA and math, and we piloted. So those tests were available. We sent it out to the entire board with the links and information on how to do that. Can certainly do it again. Those are, those are publicly available.
Thank you. Look forward to that.
Buried my agenda. So Superintendent, thank you. I wanna be mindful of you guys. Are you all, I mean, you wanna stick around? You could leave if you want. Yeah?
So I do need, I need a response from board members who are interested in attending the negotiations training. That will be on, we've decided to do March twenty-eighth. That will be held in Rutland. Currently, I have Michelle Kelly and George Gardner signed up to go with me on that, on that day. The board has previously received the information about, about that training. It's, it's, will be from nine in the morning till three in the afternoon with someone who used to work with and for the Vermont NEA, and I think it will be very instructive as we think about heading into teacher negotiations for the next school year. So without, I, we don't need discussion about it, but I do need, I need to hear from board members who are interested in going, and please call Glory, what was you saying, Glory, by March fifteenth? Would that work?
Sure.
March fifteenth is the deadline. This evening, we have two policies for your review. If you remember last month at the ANW meeting, we presented these two policies to the ANW, as well as some general information about how policies will be reviewed and developed. So late today, you received the chart from me that lists all of the table of contents of the policies in your, currently in your manual. And I've done a review with some information on the Vermont School Boards Association website. There are required policies, then there are recommended policies, and then there are policies that are recommended to be considered. So what we're starting with are the mandated policies and the policies around finances that we have been telling the agency that we're gonna get on board with. So tonight, and I, and I will be rolling out a schedule for that to happen, but tonight the board's role is just to have any questions that you have about those two.
Um, this evening, we have two policies for your review. Um, if you remember last month at the ANW meeting, we presented these two policies to the ANW, as well as some general information about how, how policies will be reviewed and developed. So, um, late today, you received, uh, the, the chart from me that lists all of the table of contents of the policies in your, currently in your manual. Um, and I've done a review with, um, some information on the Vermont School Boards Association website. There are required policies, then there are recommended policies, and then there are policies that are recommended to be considered. So what we're starting with are the mandated policies and the policies, um, around finances that we have been telling the agency that we're gonna get on board with. Um, so tonight, a- and I, and I will be rolling out a schedule for that to happen, but tonight, the board's role is just to a- have any questions that you have about those two policies, and, um, it will go back to the ANW board at the end of the month. Um, and you will have two opportunities to review both in March and in April, and then in, during the May meeting, all of the boards will be adopting these two policies. So this is the first set of many as we roll this out and think about what the board's, uh, annual work plan will look like for the next school year. And, um, you can see that in the first policy, we're, um, it indicates fiscal, um, fiscal management and general accountability. The underlying sections are the areas in which the ANW board had feedback.
So I've a question then on, um, on the fiscal oversight or the fiscal responsibility per policy. Second line item giving you the authority to transfer funds for planned expenses between two line items for up to ten percent of the lesser of the two items. The policy's silent on the process if you need to move more than that. Um, should it explicitly state whose authority is if it's not yours?
I think that needs to go to members of the ANW board. Um, that wouldn't be something I would, this is the board's policy, not mine.
So for discussion, the implication is it would require board discussion and approval to transfer more than that.
At the, so you'd have to wait for a district board meeting to do that?
This is a policy that would be applicable to all the schools, though, so it would be monthly.
Okay.
That it would come before the individual school boards, and if we're having timely financial reports, that would be part of a monthly review.
If, if I may, if it's the supervisory union, the executive board could take care of that.
I don't think the executive board was vested with the authority to do that.
On this point.
We had talked about that and there was concern about lack of full town representation for decision-making like that at that concentrated a level. I'm just, I'm just asking Joanne because I wanna make sure that you have the tools you need and the controls that you need, so.
That would be my understanding that for any, um, change in that would require board action.
Which is fine, it's just the policy doesn't state that, so.
Yeah.
The, the only other question I would have is a follow-up then based on the auditor's presentation. Um, and, uh, it specifically spoke to the school board will adopt a policy outlining the requirements for bank transfers. So will we deal with that separately, or is there any way to roll it into this?
Tonya, that's part of our procurement procedures, correct? No. Bank transfer, so it would have to be, we would have to amend this policy. Yes. Um... That there would have to be a guideline just put in there that...
And I'm not suggesting we wordsmith it tonight. All I'm suggesting is, is this the opportunity to address the auditor's comment. I assume it's a consistent, uh, approach over, uh, the supervisory union in all schools, and therefore if we deal with it, then you could check this off as an audit finding, having been addressed.
I will, um, bring that question back to the ANW board for, I think it makes sense, George.
We can't wait?
At the end of the month. But that, that makes sense, and I, I'm hoping that as we learn more about what comes up in the audits, that these kinds of statements can just only strengthen this.
Yep.
Policy, so thank you. If you will please forgive me, I was shuffling papers while you were explaining what the procedure for adopting these is. So your, your policy on adoption and development, um, really lists the responsibility around policy at the ANW level. However, state statute says that it needs, that all boards need to adopt that policy. So it's the idea that we are gonna start with new policies at the ANW level, get feedback, and then as each of the boards review it, you can ask questions that, that I will then circle back to the ANW board for consideration. We will be meeting again at the end of the month. The thought was, um, ANW can make a change or not. And then in the month of April, you will get a second review of the policy. And then in the month of May, when we have a carousel meeting, you can adopt the policy. So that's kind of the rhythm that I'm hoping for, and it, I'm gonna take an opportunity to, to put a plug in for the new work plan, but the purpose of increasing the number of carousel meetings is that you're doing many more things the same and repeated. So you'll see in the work plan that there is an increase in carousel meetings so that we can accomplish work together. Okay. Is that, is that clear, Lori?
Yes.
Kathy, thank you.
I just have one question. Number three, it says the Addison Northwest Supervisory Union Board shall arrange for timely completion of an annual audit. I mean, what, shouldn't we define what a timely completion is? I mean, you were, just did three years' worth, and I don't think that the previous years were in a timely.
Right.
Timely manner.
Uh, I mean, I would expect that timely is a reasonable person's definition. I, I, and I'd, go ahead, Tonya.
Timely means that according to state statute, they must be into the state by March thirty-first. So that's your deadline.
That's statutory, that.
That's statutory. I mean, they, they are supposed to be there by March thirty-first.
That's statutory, but in addition to that, I think there's an expectation that's been set that audits are completed before budgets are. Yes. Being communicated. So timely fashion, if you don't have a finalized audit, you're not gonna have it for your annual report. Right.
I think the reason that we did it the way we did was because if we gave it to some audit firm and, you know, set it up in the board, you know, contracted, you guys do this, and for some reason, they didn't do that, didn't meet that deadline of no fault of ours, that we had already, we had already arranged for it to happen and that it was, we can't actually do that work. I can't actually, you know, sit down and say, oh, I'm gonna do the audit. Somebody else is doing it, and if they'd said to us, sorry, we're not gonna finish it on time, what, what, what else do I have? What else can I do? I've done everything I could do to, to have made it happen in a timely way. So I think that's why it's worded that way.
Uh-huh. Is that okay?
Any lovely answers?
I mean...
I still have, you know, I still think that it should be a deadline in here, though.
Yeah.
You give your explanation.
You really can't put a deadline in there because auditing firms, they, they don't just do y- your school.
Right.
So you have to fit into their schedule, and a lot of the auditing firms do taxes too, so they do like to schedule before tax season starts. Um, but, you know, depending on their schedules, if you put a date in there and you can't fit into their schedule before that date, or just the week before, you're never gonna have that audit back in the, in time. So, so putting a date in there would be, um, bad judgment.
Restrictive.
Yeah.
Too restrictive, okay. Yes, Elizabeth.
You should have the state statute that said you have to have that audit ten days before town meeting, and I think that's important to have it before town meeting for voters to take a look at. Thanks. I'm not gonna vote you any money anymore ever again unless I have that audit in my hand to look at before I go to town meeting. I wanna know what those finances are, and I have a right as a taxpayer, and I'm not trying to put you pressure on, but I think she's on top of it, and I think that when you give them the data they need, that that will be happening.
I think we're gonna have a very good year. I think we're gonna have a very good year this upcoming year. I really do. I'm very hopeful, very hopeful. Okay. Is that it, Joanne? Well, any questions, any further questions on fiscal management and general accountability, and if not, do you have any questions or comments about electronic communications use and retention?
So that, I do, that policy is specific to board operations. This is not, uh, use of electronic devices and electronic communications by students and staff.
We have another policy, the acceptable use policy that, that drives students and staff. Should that be, what he just said be indicated on here? Does that, was there...
Well, it does say the school board and administration.
Okay.
I mean, basically, this says that your communication is public.
That's right. Oh, I see. I hadn't got that far, Kurt, thank you.
And that there are certain things that you do and don't do.
Right.
With public communication.
Okay. And then, then it references the open meeting laws. Yep, alright. Thank you. Um, do we have, I mean, since this is the first time I've seen this, I'd like a little bit of time just to read through it. Can I? You have two times to do that. Okay. And, um, if I had any questions, or I can always email you, right? Well, you will be part of the ANW board that reviews it at the end of the month. Thank you.
So my one related, uh, request, and we had been through the policy. I don't have any comments on the policy. I, I think it would be helpful if we could have a tutorial, um, and perhaps all the boards on do's and don'ts, and this is a Google Docs operation, and some of us have not had training, uh, with that, and so it would be very helpful if we could have some bullets or a user's guide that keeps us on the right side of the policy and the law, and also prevents that, oh, what just happened moment that I've had when the thing disappears off the screen. That would be very helpful.
Could that be helpful to the full board? People think that would be a good topic?
Cause I think it'd be useful to see how some of us are using it or aren't using it, so that we're understanding each other as well, and in the ways that we're either our community or kidding or not communicating through that, and whether it's the right way or the wrong way.
Sure, we could set that up, and wouldn't it be great if this board went paperless? And then we'd really be... Seriously? Thank you, you're a good model, Neil. Very good model, thank you. And, and Curtis too, he's got a smaller device, but he definitely is on it.
I think, I think you're dreaming.
Run on, George.
George. You have to start with a dream, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, business manager, March expenditure report.
So...
This is, uh, budget to actual year-end projections. Does anybody not have one that wants one?
I didn't take one. Sorry, I was trying to go paperless. Did a good job, too.
Nice job, nice job.
You'll get it, Joe.
Okay.
So, as promised, um, I have, um, done some projections for you for the end of the year. Um, the first column is your budget, um, some revisions in your budget. Um, Stephanie had, had sent me a few budget, um, transfers that needed to be handled. Um, so that's why it's called a revised budget, because some of the numbers have changed, um, depending on where she took money from and where she needed it. Um, the mu- the total budget is ten million, one hundred twenty thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. That includes your vocational. That's not the amount that was voted on, but it includes your vocational amount that you vote separately on. The actuals that are in there are as of today. Um, I printed the report this morning and updated those actuals. Um, the encumbrances, which is the third column, that is any open purchase order encumbrance, um, that is out there. Um, the, the encumbering of the salaries. I have manually encumbered health, dental, term life benefits. Um, and looking at from here forward, we still have three point four million to spend. Um, and that, and when I calculate everything out, it's looking like you could be, now, please remember this is a projection. It's only a projection. Um, you could be, um, under budget by seventy-four thousand dollars. Yes, Neil?
You know what I'm gonna ask you.
How do I get that?
Well, no, not how you get that, you do that by now. I get how you've, you've encumbered, and I was under the impression that the budget that we moved for two thousand sixteen corrected deficient projections from prior years.
Yes.
And that we were set up to expect a...
Well, please remember that Stephanie and Jay have worked very hard on keeping the spending very low this year because they knew that they had a budget that was underdeveloped.
Hmm.
Um...
Wow.
The, um, the s- there's, they're saved in areas so that they could cover deficiencies. Um, your, y- you, you got an absolutely great deal on your fuel this year. Um, I would not expect that next year considering the fuel prices are already going back up very quickly. Um, there are also, um, I, the operations and maintenance part of it. Um, I believe that, um, Mr. Worley and Stephanie have worked very hard on containing those costs. Um, most of the stuff that, um, the damage that has been done to this building, um, at no fault of anybody's, um, has been covered by insurance, so we haven't had to fork out any additional money to cover those, um, other than some salaries. But, you know, they, the administration, they've cut back on a lot of, you know, what they usually spend to, to save money. They, they've just been very, very frugal this year, knowing that you wanna come in right at budget. You, you, we don't want a deficit, um, because we know that the taxpayers are, are tired of seeing the deficit. Um, this does not take into account that, because I'm currently working on the Addison Northwest Supervisory Union projections, um, and if they come, i- if the, the central office or special ed or triple E come in over budget, we will have to be assessing you back to make us whole. Um, I don't, I, I can't even give you a projection on them because I'm still in the middle of them. Um, so that would take into account, um, so you might not have the seventy-four. It, you might run a little bit of a deficit, but I can't imagine that it's gonna be, you know, five hundred thousand like it was. Any question?
What is errors and omissions insurance for the board and directors?
Oh, my.
That is part of your, um, the insurance umbrella policy, and I believe that, um, that is where the, um, district had to, um, the insurance coverage, the deductible had to be paid from, and that's why it's so much higher, your portion of that deductible.
So, Kurt, you were asking what the expense, what you were asking, what it was? No, I don't know what it is. I just see that it's, you know, over budget by nine thousand dollars.
It covers, it, the errors and omissions insurance covers any error or any, anything fraudulent that happens within the district.
Can you tell us what, page one? Page eight?
Oh, he's...
Yeah.
He's looking at the detail. You want to look at the detail.
The stuff that we didn't get. So am I. Old-fashioned, hard copy.
The detail went out electronically. Um, after it had gone out, Joanne reviewed it and thought it would, might have been too much detail.
Pardon me.
Oh, it's a very fair question. So this is, this, this is the insurance policy that covers you, everybody at this...
Risk management.
Risk management.
At this table and the administration from errors and omissions that cause financial issues.
So it was under, underfunded, or?
It, well, I believe the amount was funded appropriately at the time that the insurance policy, but then with the, with everything that has happened, they billed us extra for that piece.
When you get a claim, cost of... So did we have a claim, or yes?
I believe it's actually, it's not even a claim, it's the deductible that we had to pay in.
Yeah, through, through ANW, but you get a percentage of that. You have to pay a percentage of that.
Okay, so it's just a percentage?
Yes, it's just, it's just the high school's percentage. Everybody else paid a little bit too.
I thought we were, everyone had the details, so.
No, that's fine.
So I, I wanna say thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
First time in... First time in two years of service on this board that there's been detail, and that we understand where we are in March, and that we forecast it ahead to know where we're gonna be in June. So congratulations.
Thank you, and I just wanted to ask, you, have you seen, you've seen the summary?
Well, I, it didn't come electronically.
I just wanted to make sure that's what you were looking for.
So I just had a couple of questions. I just want to make sure I'm following this. So encumbrances, another way to look at that is forecast to complete, is that correct?
Some of them, like your salaries, they've already been encumbered through the whole year.
Right.
The other pieces are purchase orders that haven't been paid, because the product hasn't come in yet. And the other part is the, I, is the projection for the remainder of the year that I have calculated based on, you know, such as utilities and, and benefits and stuff like that.
Great, so this is exactly what we had asked for. Thank you. One further piece that would make this helpful would be to relate back the budget column, and I know it has to do with, with vocational center. But somehow, again, sort of below the line, reflecting, we should be able to tie this to, this is what we voted on, and then a line below it, here's the vocational adjustment to get to that total. Because the first thing I did when I got the big thing was look at the total, and I couldn't figure out what the total was. So, a few more tweaks, and, and we're, we're good. So that's with respect to mechanics. With respect to management, I really want to thank Stephanie and Jay, and the help that you've gotten from the central office, because the discussion leading into budget development was that we were going to be looking at a, an operational deficit for this current fiscal year. And that weighed heavily on the discussion that we had, looking at FY16. So the fact that you have been able to turn that around is really significant. So I, I mean this sincerely, this is, this is great work. This is the first time in two years that I've seen that we know where we are. Thank you.
But we don't.
Well?
We have a, we have a, we, it's a big map. I mean, once again, I, it, it, we, we know we have an idea here, but she just said that it might have a, we might come back as a small deficit when everything gets consolidated in.
Understood, but we have three months left, and it's a forecast, and it's the first time we've ever had a forecast.
New to the board, didn't realize that. I understand, I understand, I, I'm not doubting excellent work that that whole side has done, previous years and this year's. But, uh, I'm just saying that I don't want, you know, counting chickens before they hatch.
You don't want to take it to the bank.
I don't want to take it to the bank, and I want, I don't want anyone understanding, I mean, you, am I, am I correct? What I heard is that you, there might even be a small deficit.
Yes. You know, I, I mean, I'm projecting right now the surplus, but I have to figure out A and W first, because of all of the changes that have been made. We are expecting to be running a little bit of a deficit there too, so.
And I, I don't mean to downplay, like I said, I think you guys are doing an awesome job, way, way above what I, what I could actually even phantom try to understand. And I, and it's great that we have projected windfall, if you will. But I just want to make sure that everyone understood what you said.
That's why I said it's a projection. You know, if it doesn't come in at the end of the year at seventy-four thousand, don't fire me, please.
You can't go anywhere. Not you.
I, you know, that's, I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were saying.
Just so, if I could, can I just ask one final, I think it'll be constructive for our conversation about what budget we move back forward though. Is it fair to say you have a reasonable level of confidence that we won't be looking at multiple six digits of deficit for this coming year?
Yes.
That's good news, very, very, very good news.
And if, if I could, I mean, I'm, this is, I, I've done more of this this year than I, I ever have in my, in my past. So I, there's not a teacher in this building who I haven't had to say no to recently. A lot of this is just, you know, looking at what we spent in the past, the unbudgeted transportation, to say, I need you to cut back, you can't take that field trip, you can't do this. So I'm reasonably confident that everything that I control, and that's everything on here, with the exception of special ed and this, and the central office assessment, will come in under budget.
Absolutely.
Barring an unforeseen, you know, catastrophic event to the, to, you know, the building or the roof or something. I mean, we've got, that, warm weather's coming, our heating woes are, you know, we're gonna have to address them. But we're, I think we're over the hump of, of winter, and, you know, low fuel prices helped us immeasurably this year. So, and I'm feeling pretty good about this.
And I would just like to add that the majority of this budget work has been Stephanie and not me. So I think we need to be clear about that. She has spent an insane, no, an insane amount of time helping to make all these things happen, so.
Anybody else? I just wanted to extend what you said a little bit to the teachers, because I know you guys are part of what Stephanie does. You support her, and I'm sorry that you have to go through it, and I thank you for what you do. And getting us to this awesome numbers. So.
Finance committee.
Finance committee, that's me.
Does me being your vice chair?
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, we have nothing to report, really. Tonya's been excellent about getting back to me about questions that we've had. Actually, the most recent questions have answers, and you were gonna share me on a Google Doc, so I can share with the rest of the board?
Did.
You did already, okay, thank you. So that's it for the finance committee, unless anybody has any questions. Yeah, we're gonna do the action items. Okay. So discussion, debrief on the budget vote, and you're running this, I take it?
Do you want me to run this?
Would you, please? Thank you. So I'd like to share a little bit of information with the board first. The, these are the voting results for actually, for all of the three budgets. Thank you. In case you haven't had an opportunity, technically savvy. So I do think it's interesting to note a couple of things. And I hope my math is good. So, the difference between favorable and opposed for the Virgin Union High School budget is a hundred and thirteen. That, personally, I was surprised of how close the vote was in Virgin's, because I knew that there were, at least in the circles that we spent a lot of time with, there were some factions here that were unhappy in the past. I know Virgin's as a town has, has voted the budget down, even when it passed. So I was concerned about that, and I thought that was a very positive thing, to see such a small margin there. Obviously, the story here is, is Ferrisburg, there were eighty-five, there was an eighty-five vote difference in the opposed versus in favor of. Let's see. Pantin was, has been pretty consistent over the years, about forty to, wouldn't you say, Rick? That number is, seems to be around ninety-six total, and the number that vote for and against seemed to be pretty consistent. Waltham was great, came out for the Virgin Union High School budget, the delta there was nineteen. Also, you can see that the capital improvement passed in four of the five towns. Again, Ferrisburg was, was opposed.
And that budget, that, that, I didn't even tell you, right?
That's, that item is done, that, that item has passed. I do want to say, and thank you Nancy for the survey, I'm comparing the number of votes from last year in each of the towns. There were a hundred and eighty votes in Addison, this year one sixty-three.
That was the re-vote.
Oh, that was the re-vote, thank you.
That's the re-vote, right there.
Okay, so the re-vote, thank you. In Ferrisburg, it was four sixty-three, and in the current year, five hundred and seventy-one voters voted in Ferrisburg, so that was a sizable increase. Pantin numbers are the same. Last year, four hundred and forty-three people in Virgin's voted for the budget, and this year, five hundred and thirty, so that was a difference. Waltham, the same, eighty-nine and eighty-nine. So I think, just thinking about the numbers from that perspective.
I think that Nancy's point is really well taken by me, though. That was a re-vote, so you wouldn't expect the same turnout as you would at town meeting.
That is true, that is true.
And in fact, when we look at the 2014, the first budget vote, and I do have that history, I found it, you provided it to me last year. Doesn't have the breakout by town. There, there, there was actually about a hundred and forty votes more in the first round of voting last year.
Total?
Total.
Total.
Than there were in the aggregate this year. Now, it was also defeated.
So before we move on, I don't know if the board wanted to have any further discussion about these numbers?
Well, I, I heard Lou say something earlier, you know, about not having gotten material into the newsletter, which I think is a miss on our part. There are lots of parents in Ferrisburg, they talk, fair. So we'll certainly have to use that tool as we get back forward again. But I got the impression of a little prickliness over there in Ferrisburg, because of the, the same outcome in the elementary, which was a surprise.
Yeah, and if you can see, they, they...
George, do you have any insights what's going on over in Ferrisburg?
No, I was shocked by the elementary budget shoot-down. I thought that would pass, but...
Thirty-five votes, still close.
Yeah, that's uncommon.
Yeah. They, the technology fund voted down by two, two votes, and they passed their capital improvement.
They want to maintain a building.
For what?
So I thought, I thought it was important to start with just kind of the bigger picture. I do, I'd have some thoughts that I'd like to share with the board this evening, and maybe I'll just share after. So the first thing I want to say is that with an eleven percent increase in the budget, if you pull out the special education, debt service, and food service component, the Virgin Union High School budget, which is seven point two percent, not low. Kind of frame it in a different way.
Guess I don't have it.
Stephanie and I met to talk about possible reductions, and I felt like we needed to come to this meeting with some ideas from the board to consider. Reduction Plan One would be sixty thousand dollars. That would give you a ten point five percent increase in expenditures. The administration would spread out the food service deficit, reduce Walden Transportation, and reduce software and textbooks for that amount of money. The tax rate for Pantin, Waltham, Virgin's, Ferrisburg, and Addison are listed. As you could see, there would be a tax reduction in, in Virgin's and also in Addison.
Relative to what the budget would have been had it passed?
Yes.
Actually?
What, compared to what the budget would have been if it passed?
No, it's compared to the FY15, what they are actually being billed this year.
So, let me read that back to you. If we move forward a budget that had a ten and a half percent increase in expenditures, that would result in Virgin's in a one-half of one cent reduction in the tax rate?
Yes, because their percentage of, their percentage of students has gone down, the other percentages of students have gone up.
And we got a new CLA number in Virgin's too.
And you got a new CLA?
And you have a new CLA number, and Waltham is the only town right now that is below a hundred percent on their CLA, so they get taxed additional.
Gotcha.
So if the board wanted us to consider further reductions, an additional sixty thousand dollars would be three cents on the tax rate. That would be nine point two percent increase in the budget. And in addition to the list, aforementioned list, we would reduce extracurriculars, operations and maintenance, community-based learning, transportation, and middle school supplies. Again, the tax rate would be reduced, would, would go, would be less than in Virgin's and also Addison. Reduction Plan Three would be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that would be four cents on the tax rate. The increase in expenditure would be eight point six two percent. In addition to what I just mentioned, we would have an additional operation and maintenance, reduction of thirty thousand, PE equipment, continue with the reductions in extracurricular, we would reduce technology and receptionist hours. Should the board want us to take further reduction, that would be a two hundred and forty thousand dollar reduction, five cents on the tax rate. That would be a budget increase of seven point nine percent. In addition to the above, we would reduce the Walden program by fourteen thousand. The community-based learning personnel by point five, and community-based learning transportation for ten thousand dollars.
I have a question. When we were talking about the budget in the first place, building it, a penny on the tax rate was two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. How did it all of a sudden become only sixty thousand?
You have to take into account the, your special article and your deficit, and once you start making some cuts, and once you start making a cut, the percentage, the, the cents get higher the, the more you deduct. So when I, when it was first introduced to you, all I was taking was expenditures. And if you, you know, and, and now that I can run it through a tax sheet with your article that has already passed, your deficit that we're trying to fund, plus the vocational amount in there, it, it reduces the, the amount that you have to... But I ran every single component, every plan through a tax sheet, and, and it came, it calculated the, the cents for me.
Thank you.
You probably have heard state numbers now too?
Because the majority of budgets have passed, so are those state tax numbers now fixed?
No.
No, yeah?
The legislature won't, won't vote those in until May.
Right, sorry, I, I, I need that.
But I, actually, I should have included that in my first part of the explanation, Neil, because out of the eleven percent, I mean, out of the original, you know, two cents is on the tax rate from the state.
Right, right, there's no doing anything about that.
No.
So obviously, the, the proposal is to stay further away from personnel changes. That was, that was our, our goal in presenting this to you. We're looking for board guidance concerning what it is that you would like us to consider in terms of what the communities would want to see in a, in a, in a re-vote.
I just have a question, I think I get every category, but when you talk about reducing extracurricular, I don't know what falls in that.
It, it's, it's gonna be up to Pete. I mean, we, he, he gave me some scenarios, it, we could be looking at some teams. I, I don't want to say that, because that's, a lot of, a lot of, you know, administrators play that game. You know, they cut the basketball team or something like that. It's really up to the discretion of, of the athletic director. He's got supplies, he's got transportation, we're gonna look at, at reducing some of those areas and maintain essentially programming as, as many teams as we can. We may reduce, in one of the scenarios, it was reducing to one coach in, in one of the teams where we have JV and varsity. But I, I don't want to commit, Pete, to any of this, because the, the, the numbers are a little fuzzy.
I was just trying to figure out if extracurricular was athletics?
It is, it's athletics.
And other after-school extracurricular activities, that's all I was...
Yeah, it's athletics and, it's athletics and clubs. So it, there's some, there's, you know, the club stipends, coaches' stipends, club stipends.
So in your world, right, you're, you're saying extracurricular, it's not, it's all athletic endeavors, it's not, I'm making this stuff up. German club, the Spanish club, National Athletic Society, just that.
Yeah, it is, it could be.
we said, athletic or other.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's all I...
Yeah, and, and a major cost for, for any of that is transportation. We're looking at some creative ways to, to support transportation without always hiring a bus. So, um, you know, that could, that could be sort of the, this is the logjam right now, and, and we're looking at some of that, but, you know, I, what I don't want to do is be locked into a public forum right now where we say we're going to cut X team and...
And I'm not asking you.
Yeah.
That, that was a little granular, you was not asking about.
Thank you.
But just a transportation question. I know we have a transportation contract, does our contract require us to, does our extracurricular or sporting activity transportation fall under the contract, or is that a separate?
It, it, some of it does fall under the contract, but we, but we have not budgeted entirely for what we need.
So for an after-school sporting event, you couldn't do, your contract requires you to continue to use Betscha?
Our contract requires that we use Betscha for another year.
Okay.
But there are sports, I mean, I, I don't want to speak for you, Pete, I think, like football, that we, we have not typically...
Club, also club activities, so they raise their own funds, we don't, that's paid for that. So we've been creative with wrestling, since, you know, eight hundred dollars, you send a bus down to one of their tournaments, and we've all been able to rent the vans for significant savings and, you know, that.
Cool, thanks.
Do you have a question for Stephanie? So if, if Pete, if Pete, if Pete is asked to go forward...
And exercise the same kind of thing that you were, I imagine Pete would look at enrollment numbers in the same way that you looked at enrollment numbers in order to make decisions about what types of things that he would have to deal with?
Yes.
Is that fair?
Yeah, we've, we've worked out a number of scenarios already.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I, I would just like to say that the, the reductions that Joanne listed are, you know, there's some, I hope that there's some wiggle room in some of those areas. I mean, it, when we say, uh, middle school supplies for forty-two hundred, that may end up being that it makes more sense to reduce in another area because there's a compelling reason. So these are suggestions of ways that these reductions might be achieved, but they're not, again, I, I don't want to be locked in and have someone come a year from now and say, "Well, wait a minute, you said you were going to reduce supplies by forty-two hundred dollars in the middle school," and, and, you know, I hope that I would have the, the latitude to, to make them where I see they make the most sense.
So, my understanding is that these are ideas of how to make that sixty, hundred and twenty. It's not, it's not the idea, these are ideas how those cuts can be done.
Rick, our, our, our purposes tonight is to give the board some thought process around what would need to change, should you ask, should you provide us with financial guidance in any of these areas. These are, these are ideas, but we may, once you give us the guidance, we have to put more detail to it.
Okay.
But it, this is our initial thinking, and the point I wanted to make is that we're trying to stay away from cutting any additional staff, which, by the way, should you keep this in mind, I know last year you went out to vote in May, I actually would like to suggest that we need to notify teachers by April fifteenth, should they not be having a position here next year. And if we do not have a budget by April fifteenth, we may have to go deeper with notifications, and we would choose not to do that if, if that's possible.
So can we go a little further with what that means in terms of timing and decision-making?
What that means in terms of, terms of timing is that we would have to, we would have to adopt a budget sometime next week.
You want to move a vote?
To move a vote for the fourteenth or fifteenth of April. I'm sorry, thirteenth or fourteenth of April.
Are you aware of when Addison Northeast plans to do their revote? Have they been talking yet?
I don't know when Addison, you mean Moncton and, and...
Well, Mount Ave.
Mount Ave, that's right. No, I'm, I'm not aware of that. And I, I've had an initial conversation with the Ferrisburg board chair, and he, he would, he would be open to that, bringing that suggestion to his board on Thursday night.
If, I'm just, the reason I bring up Addison Northeast is if there is a vote there and it coincides on the same day as the vote here, that creates a little bit more media attention around the whole fact that there is a vote and might get more people, which can't be a bad thing. Plus, it has us talking together, just like the new legislation suggests that we should I've got a couple pieces that I'd like to kind of offer under the guise of guidance. I know that it is incumbent on you guys to set the program, it is incumbent on us to set the, the parameters of the budget. That said, I have heard a lot about the music program, and however small that reduction was, it brought some significant anger amongst some of the community. So I want to offer that as an observation. I also wonder about, because of the cost of transportation and what some of those costs go to, I do wonder whether that is a place to look. It's, you know, obviously up to you guys, not us exactly, but I do think it, in the guise of having parents assist more, maybe that's one area where it would be reasonable.
I actually, at the ANW meeting, because you negotiate at the ANW level, there are some pieces around transportation I'd like to bring to your attention that we might work with the teachers on to find some other solutions, but that's not going to help us for tonight.
Well, tonight, you need guidance.
We need, we need budget guidance.
You need guidance, right.
Well, people talk to me, and every time they talk to me, what they say is Walden. So, they all think that that's an expense that we can do without. That, that and the overall idea of taxes going up are the two items that they concentrate on when they talk to me. I don't hear about anything else.
Yes, Lou?
Can I ask a question about Walden? Not, I just, I'm not, I don't want to delve into the history, but for reasons good and bad, otherwise it's become a legacy. So, could you tell me two numbers? What the total cost of the program is now, and were it to be cut, what is that total cost now?
Um, I'll have...
Ish.
Okay, ish. Let me say that there, we are looking at reorganizing the program where we would have some of our teachers who are currently in the Walden program teaching coursework at Virgin Union High School. So it's not an overall savings, but it is a shift and would have an impact of reduction of the program. So that said, in addition to that, I want to also mention that for the current year, the Walden program underwent a number of areas of cuts. In field trips, in supplies, and in transportation, there were probably four or five different areas that we cut. Those cuts would have not come back, those are going to be real cuts going forward. What I proposed today was a cut in transportation, and depending on how deep we needed to go, we may need to eliminate a staff person.
Or partial staff person.
Or a partial staff person. But in any event, that program does get affected. And what I said in the very beginning is that we, we believe in personalized learning here. I don't ever want to have one program pitted against another program when they both accomplish the same thing, and that's personalized learning. I don't think that's fair to the kids because it, it, it values one group over another. There is a lot of value in the Walden program, and, and that's, that program has served really well kids that need alternatives in their education. In some cases, we've been able to save money because they haven't gone on to special ed placements that are very expensive. That said, we're looking at cuts across the board, and we feel like what we presented tonight is reasonable. So, with that said, I'm going to say ballpark-ish, twenty thousand dollars.
That's what costs for the program?
No. I'm saying in terms of the reductions, it costs...
That's what you get if you eliminate it.
Right, that's what it costs.
After...
But making up, I mean, if it costs two hundred thousand...
It's less than two hundred thousand.
I could foresee that when we have to take in all these kids that don't have another place to send them, like she was saying, like, so one of them then enrolls or now qualifies for special ed or something else that's more expensive, or their behavioral problem in the building, and there, there are other social costs that might crop up that are going to come from that, so it's not free, in the sense that we might not recognize those costs immediately, but because they clearly are in an alternative program because they need in an alternative way, then we might not save anything. We might, it might actually cost us a lot more because we don't have another program to send them to.
Joanne, could you, could you get us a total cut number for the Walden program that we've already done?
Sure.
I think that might be helpful. I mean, George, I was thinking...
It definitely would be helpful because that would be one, I mean, it goes down to information that's out there. A lot of people didn't have this information last Tuesday. And it's one of the things that at town meetings down over in Penn, Walden was, was Walden programs and the community outreach programs were talked about because they don't, one, they're, it's programs, they see, they see a line item, but they don't understand what that item is. And during, but I have to, to piggyback what I just said on that. The big talk in, at town, at Penn Town Hall was the transportation. I can't tell, it was transportation budget.
Oh, transportation.
I can't tell you the number of farmers and people who must be on the road during the day because they, they comment how there's a Ferrisburg bus that drives through, there's a Virgin's bus, and then in a day, there's two buses that go to Burlington before one student. And so, I mean, I don't know the logistics, I'm just repeating what they said, and they're wondering why, I mean, this, these are costs that they don't understand, or these are, activities are happening, they don't understand why, and therefore the extra cost. And so that's what their concern is. And, and the fact is, it would be nice, as, as Laura just said, that, to find out when, when someone asks, because like, like George, I, you know, Walden is, was one of the topics, and, you know, it would have been nice to say, "Well, I mean, I told them, well, they've already had some, we've already cut that, that program a significant amount for what that program offers." And, "But what is the amount?" Well, I didn't have the exact figures with it. So I think, I think to piggyback on what a lot of people out there are saying, and, and for myself and back of my mind saying, the information's not, not out there on these items, you know? So when people come, come to me and say, "Walden," well, yeah, but do you know what, you know, what is that program? And, okay, well, how does that benefit? And where's, why is that program, you know, where's that coming? The other thing is, a lot of misunderstanding in Pantin, I'm, once again, just speaking from my own hometown, they're, they're confused with the state involvement in the educational system. And so that was their big concern. But the, the fact is, I, I had three or four people stand up during, during the meeting and say, "Well," and they commented about how they saw buses going, going down the road for three different areas from Betscha. Three different buses, none of them fall, and they, I mean, buses stop at the same places. Why, why, why does Betscha have three buses? Why are we paying for such a system? And as I, and, and I had no answers to give them other than, we, in the past, the, the transportation budget was somewhat subsidized by the state, and I think possibly that was an oversight on the previous people dealing with the money because it was being subsidized. They said, "Well, state's paying for it." And that's just my, my gist on it, and that's, thanks. So, I mean, that, to me, transportation is the issue that town of Pantin wants to know about.
So, just generally, if I could respond about transportation, I mentioned previously that we have a contract through two thousand seventeen, and transportation is always on the minds of community members. We are not required, I don't know if you know this, we're not required to provide transportation. It's optional, but we have to provide equity in terms of transportation. So what we're doing currently is looking at alternative ways that we can get what we need to get done. We have a, we have a, a transportation system that does not have small, really small buses, so when it comes to transporting kids, we put them in taxi cabs. That's not always the best situation, either from a safety standpoint or from an economical standpoint, because it winds up being much more expensive in taxis. But yet, somebody sees one kid on a large bus, that's not very cost efficient either. So we're in the process of, we've set up a time to talk to the Addison County actor group. It's not going to be an immediate fix, but we are currently looking at alternatives. And now that we have one transportation contract where we assess the value out to the schools, I think we're going to have a little bit, I'm not going to promise big savings, but I think we'll have some flexibility in the routes. And going forward, I think it would be a good idea for us to require any transportation company that we work with to have the software that some of the bigger systems use in order to map out those routes, because I also see some duplication. Not having really any time here or involvement with how this works, it's not an easy fix, but I can tell you that it's on the radar screen, and we are trying to do something about it.
There's a lot of things that are in there, but they're all expenses.
If I could add, between FY fourteen and FY fifteen, Walden had approximately ten thousand dollars of reduction in their day-to-day expenses, fees, consultancies, those sorts of things. It, it was offset by the addition of, in this year's budget for sixteen, the transportation, which had never been aligned to that particular area of the budget, as, as had been the rest of the budget. I mean, in no way, it was a lump sum of transportation, it wasn't, you know, parsed out to the different departments, so, but that transportation was calculated and further reduced. So they're down approximately a thousand dollars a month in transportation costs. So we, so they, their, their program has been reduced already to this point, and it's, they're looking at further reductions for next year.
Are you managing the questions for the board? That's okay, I'm just, I apologize, go ahead.
Just a clarification with regard to transportation. It's my recollection, it's the charter for the high school, I want to create a distinction. Charter for the high school requires transportation to and from school.
Thank you, I didn't know that.
Extracurricular activities, it's not required. And if anybody knows other than that, please correct me, but that's my understanding of the, the history with respect to just the transportation issue. One other bright comment with respect to budget, and I'll, it's not the only thing I'm concerned about, but nobody's mentioned it, so I will, I get very concerned looking at reductions associated with operations and maintenance. We adopted a policy to avoid a situation where we are waiting until things break. And we have significant deferred maintenance to deal with, I believe it would be imprudent. I understand you want guidance from us on overall numbers, that's one piece of guidance I would offer on specifics.
George?
Just to refer back to the proposed budget for sixteen, it shows the bottom line of Walden at two hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and one dollars. I understand that you're making some cuts as you go along, but it is a two hundred and ten thousand dollar project.
And the comment that I made, George, was knowing that whether we adopt the current dollar amount or not, there still will be a change in that program that will impact on isolating two hundred dollars to support just Walden.
Okay.
Two hundred thousand, say two hundred.
Yeah. It's okay, it's getting late.
At least I caught my signal. Oh, yes, Kathy.
I'd just like to caution people on cutting transportation by school buses and going to carpooling or other, you know, having students transport themselves. I'm not sure what the liability issues are, if there is an accident with students in a vehicle, even if it's a parent driving. A school bus is about your safest vehicle on the road to transport students. So if you're looking for other means of transporting students, you really need to consider this because I will say that not all Walden students ride the bus, some of them do drive, and there was an incident this winter where one did go off the road. And I know many of you don't remember this, but back in about ninety... go off the road. And I know many of you don't remember this, but back in about 1974, we lost, there were five people killed just past Woodman Hill, and four of them were students from this high school driving to the location site. And you really need to think about that when you're cutting transportation.
Okay, thank you.
Can we cut, can we cut the bus sizes? If we don't have a full load, I don't know why we have transportation, or all the kids drive to school anyways, one of my questions, but can we cut the bus sizes down?
Well, I think, Joanne, what, what Joanne was saying is, they are looking at all sorts of different ideas. Act, the actor buses are smaller, and that was one of the things she was thinking about.
Run model.
Laurie?
Yes.
I understand your concern about private transportation and the liability involved in making sure that everybody's got the proper amount of insurance and that they drive carefully. But I think that anybody traveling in a private vehicle with a seatbelt is way safer than in a school bus without one.
You're the professional bus driver, so.
No, I mean, your vehicles, the school buses are higher off the road, so most vehicles, unless it's a big truck, go under the bus. The seats are built higher in the buses now to cushion those kids. The seatbelt issue comes up, is if you have a rollover, and you've got kids hanging in the air, and they unbuckle those seatbelts, drop down on the person that's on the bottom. You know, are they hurt any, any more than that? But the school buses, there's a lot less plastic in the school buses than on your vehicles.
So, in the interest of time.
Yep.
Laurie?
Yes.
You've got a hand on the right.
Hand on my right.
I'll let Ms. Armstrong go first.
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to ask Joanne about the notification of teachers by April 15. So if we notify the teachers by April 15 that there may be some possible cuts, that we may get rid of, I'm not saying this now, that we may get rid of, say, five teachers, is, do we have to pay a penalty on their contract if they're contracted for, for three years and we're only keeping over two? So we have the right to get a notification by that day?
It's outlined in their master agreement, it's based on seniority and the content area in which they teach, and the grade level.
Okay, so we can't cut them again, can we?
With the proper notification procedures.
Okay, thank you.
We could provide notification of reduction in force until and unless we get a new budget, but what we were proposing is trying to do a vote as to avoid a large, larger number of notifications.
If we don't pass the budget by April 15, don't you have given them notice? Wouldn't you give them notice to say, there could be possible cuts because the budget has not been passed, and we don't know if it will pass without four or five votes until we get down to a good number? So you'd be sending out notice to them? Thank you.
You need guidance. So, I gave you my thoughts. I don't, I'm not sure I favor going any further than the first one down here in your proposed reduction, and only because of the optics of saying, okay, we heard you, and we reduced more. You came in, you all came in to do a job, and I think our job is to give you the tools that you need. So for my part, I would support a budget that endeavored to go back out with exactly what we did before, and some very strong efforts to sell it, and not go into cut mode unless we were told unequivocally by the majority of voters that that's what needed to happen. I heard it on both sides. I heard it on both sides at town meeting, and I heard it on both sides in my email box. So, somebody has to make the first salvo, so there it is.
Is that a motion, Neil?
I, do you need a motion? If you need, if we need a motion to provide guidance for a budget that we would.
Not to provide guidance, no, I'm guessing.
That we would adopt in a meeting that we may have next week, I can give a motion, but I'm not sure that I need to. I get that out there so that Rick, George can respond to it, Laurie, Jeff, everybody. Kurt?
Yeah, I also don't particularly like anything lower than the first option, and would prefer exactly what Neil said.
I do, too.
Could I just ask a point of order?
Yes, sir.
This is a discussion item?
Yes.
Are we taking action under a discussion item? I don't believe we can.
No.
Right.
We're giving guidance.
Okay, but when we say, is that a motion, it implies.
That's why I asked, that's why I asked if we needed a motion, because I didn't think we did, so.
Thank you, appreciate that clarification. Thank you. Yes, Lou.
So just to clarify what I'm hearing, and you're already, the budget that was voted down already included all of these reductions that came out in one of these written documents that you presented. So it's the .33 in art, .6 in English, and half of teacher world language, and one in math, and .33 music, .6 in science, .33 drivers, .2 in principal's office, and 1.0 FTE in operations and maintenance.
Yes, the 10, the 10.4, the 10.4 plus budget included 4.95 FTEs reduction.
If I did that math, is that what I'm wrong, I would give?
Yep. There were minor increases in, in a couple of areas to meet EQS.
Lou, what you just heard me propose, and two people say, I agree, was to stick with the budget that we had already proposed. And that, for my own personal purposes, I would not be comfortable going below the first line, but I don't even want to go to the below two, the first line. That's what you heard me say.
All right, so you would prefer to go back out with the original budget, better combination.
That is exactly what I said.
And so, I have a couple of people sitting in front of me who are turning around, saying, I don't even know what cuts you're talking about. So this, this is where I'm going to go back to say, this was never published publicly that anyone could find it easily, and therein lies a very, I feel, a very large contributing factor to our performance. You hear the 11% increase, but you don't see the cuts that were made to get you there. And I think, I don't want to be a dead horse, but I, I think you've got a, a big story to tell that never got out effectively.
Duly noted. But I think some other members of the board should probably have an opportunity to express their opinion on what I just threw out there, because I, I bet they don't fully agree.
I'm, I, you're absolutely right, Neil. I know. I think that there was a large enough percentage of the voters that said no, that it would be a slap in their face to go back out with the same budget. I think you need to make a cut, and I think it needs to be more than the first step. I truly do.
I actually was looking at the reduction plan for $180,000. But I'm not in favor of any cuts in operations and maintenance. So, you know, somewhere between $150,000 and $120,000. I, I'm with George. I don't run with a crowd that doesn't support education. So everybody I talked to said they would vote for the budget. So I'm concerned, though, that if we go back to the public without showing some significant reduction, that we'll be doing this again in May. So, that's how I feel.
Hang on just a second. Richard, did you want to?
I, I, I concur with Kirk.
I, I would like to see something between 120 and 150 myself. The problems, once again, that, that I see, I mean, that's my guidance. The problem that we have is, my understanding now was that the, the budget that we sent out to the public, it wasn't my understanding that those, those were the way we're going to make it. Those were suggestions on how, what we're going to do, just like these are suggestions where we're going to, how we're going to make those budgets. So, my problem is, is if we publicize this, and I think I brought this up last month, if we publicize that we're going to, we're going to cut, cut it by X number of dollars, and this is how we're going to do, well, my neighbor, the farmer, he's going to see down here the money, because he's busy, he's doing, he's making a living. He's going to say, okay, we're going to cut, and this is what we're cutting. Good, okay, sounds good. And then turns out, that isn't what we're cut, or we cut something that even more, that he's like, wait, there's a lot of confusion here. My, I, I 100% would agree with Lou that the, there's no, the public wasn't educated, if you will, lack of better words for it at the moment, on how the budget was come up, up with, but nor was I, because once again, it was a state of flux. I mean, I have no problem with the procedure that we have, that we give you guidance, you do your job, that's your job, and I have no problem with that idea at all. The problem that I have is the, how do we communicate that to the 98% of people who don't come, or who don't read the paper? Okay? My, my percentage is, is much higher than I sure is. I'm just saying that, please don't jump down my throat. But, but, well, I, once again, just pulling my road, road on Tuesday, last Tuesday, talking to the people who came to the town meeting for the meeting aspect, I mean, I, I'm from the smallest, smallest representation of, of the town, and I, I can tell you that we didn't even have 40 people at the town meeting. Okay? So, I mean, people came in, vote, and they leave, which, I mean, busy people are working. I have no problem with that idea. That's, that's what we all have to do. But my concern is that we need to cut, because I think, I totally agree with my two, two cohorts there, that the, if we go back with, with the same numbers, people are going to say, you guys are not doing your, doing what we ask. We don't, we, we're paying, you know, as the comedian, or that guy that ran for mayor a few years ago for taxes, or rent's too high. It's basically the same thing. That's what they've already, that's what they voted. They've said taxes are too high, percentage is too, I think. The fact of trying to educate the people on where the cuts are is kind of hard, because once again, I mean, am I wrong with that understanding that this was what you came up with, with the .3 is based on, on, on school, class size?
Based on class sizes and our present enrollment.
And your present enrollment, but once again, that was, was, it might be my take, and correct me if I'm wrong, I, more likely I'm wrong, but it was my take, it's kind of the same thing that you have here. These are suggestions on how you're going to make that bottom line. You weren't, those weren't cast in stone.
They're still not cast in stone, but our scheduling and, our student scheduling right now is looking more and more likely that these reductions are indicated based on our enrollment.
Absolutely. And I, and I, I'm not questioning what you're doing and how you're coming up with the figures, because I have no idea how you're doing it. You're doing a great job, far as I'm concerned with that aspect. That's not what I'm saying. But my concern is twofold. One is, we need to, we need to cut more, plain and simple. Second is, we need to educate the public, not just the people who come to the meeting, how we're cutting this. But it's kind of hard to tell Aston Gardens, my neighbor, that we're going to cut the budget by 120, 20,000, well, who's going to get hit? Because that's the next question people ask. How, okay, I want, my tax rate is not going to go up that much, all right, sounds good, but what am I getting? What, what is, what am I not getting? What are my kids getting, what are my not kids getting? And, and my issue is, we don't know that. We have some ideas, and you guys are great, have some great fundamental, and you have your backing, where the research that you've done to figure out how these ideas come in, but you, you just said it's not cast in stone that .33 is going to be cut out of the music department. It's a pretty good idea that it is, but it's not cast in stone. So my problem is, is that we go and publicize that in, in the press, we're not, it's not fact. That's my issue. You know, I'm concerned with that aspect. But I, I mean, I agree with George and Kirk. I, I, I would like to see, and the 120, the 150 is definitely where I would be looking for.
Okay.
Okay. Carol had a question, and there were some other questions as well, so, but I'd like to wrap it up, so if you could be brief. Wait, Carol's first, sorry. Go ahead, Carol.
Well, my concern is that, you know, Francis Asher, you know, people came to lock me in, million-dollar deficit, and went through, you know, drama, to say the least. So you think, okay, we made it through that. And then this year is again 11%. And people are going to think, okay, we made it through it. They also need to know these projections that you're going to have, you're coming in good for your ending, which is great, but your fund balance is projected at 672,000. FY16, the fund balance is projected at 508,000, and we're, we're going out to the taxpayers. I put my name out there, so I pray for people to, you're rich, there's anger, you know, you're spending there for savings. But, but the philosophy in, in America is, it's only going to hurt the real, the people who come to you desperate are your family. I mean, desperate. And, and so, because you don't hope for a budget, does that mean you don't support education? No, it doesn't. It doesn't mean that. And so I, I think that there has to be a real honesty that how much can education, I mean, this blows me away, and not because of you, of the commission, of, of our budgets. And I'm not shocked, because I watch numbers, and it's back to budget experts, that people are shocked, they don't, they don't understand that this is actually a norm. So I'm in a, I'm a, and, and I'm just going to say that I really would like the teachers to consider to freeze their wages for one year. And I know that we can't force that, and I hope we don't be able to, or, or the extracurricular activity to hold on. Education has to be thoughtful. I hate seeing a tax because we're prices, you know, looking at extracurricular activity. I'm willing to give our gun to, to make sports happen at a high cost, but, thank you.
This time I want to speak as a parent and a Patton taxpayer. Something that's just upsetting to me, you know, you hear those .3s. I have a daughter in the school system. She was really excited about the art club. She wants to take French. She certainly is in love with the music party. I've also seen school choices come across my desk in the past month. We talked about declining enrollment, and I see a giant eighth grade, a giant fourth grade with a kindergarten class. You want to guarantee people to leave, you lower the educational quality of the school. Something else I think is very short-sighted about these decreases is that when I moved here 15 years ago, first thing you look at is the school system. They pass their budgets, the school system's on the up and up. Let's move here. If you're talking about farmers that have land, you have to talk about property values. The property values could go down tens of thousands of dollars if you don't have a adequate school system, and you don't have people that want to move to the area. Say you save a couple hundred dollars on your taxes, you could be losing significant amount of money on your property values. So, we should think long and hard. The last thing I want to mention is spreading out the food service deficit to $44,000. As a parent now, that will not be in trouble for saying this, some of those .3s don't have to go away. And that's what's making people really consider other options, and really hurting, I think, our educational program. The .3s, if the teachers don't stay for a partial segment of teaching, it just doesn't happen. So you're affecting a lot of teachers and a lot of programs for a very minimal amount of money. And if this $44,000 wasn't included in the first one, that could save some full-time positions with a fluctuating student enrollment, that will go up if we have an excellent system. I think that'd be a wiser way to do it.
I, quickly again, I'm very positive for education. I'm at college in 2006. I want these kids to have top-notch education. And after being over there in Columbus, Ohio, I think they get a lot more over there than they get here. They have bigger populations of thousands, and high schools are four times as big as this, two or three of them. But listen, we're looking at, we're looking at the economy here. I'm a retired person. I only have X number of dollars to spend. I have nothing else. We've got a high population of seniors out there. You have got to cut this budget. I can see, can see, you haven't even gotten started. $240,000, 7.9 increase, I'm going to laugh at you and walk away. And I know you're not ready. I just know you're not ready to what's coming at your face. So do what you can, cut what you can. You're going to get voted down, and you're really going to have to sit down and go over this, this budget, and the teachers, et cetera. If I agree with him, you're going to have to cut them, because there's some teachers that are not going to just stay here for part-time work. There's nothing here. are not gonna just stay here for part-time work, there's nothing here, the economy's not here, so, good luck.
Laurie, if I may have one last comment? If we consider the hundred and fifty thousand dollar option, which is, I think, Plan, Plan Three less the operations and maintenance factor, you take that off the ten thousand four sixty, or ten million four sixty-nine, that brings you just one point four percent reduction, and I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that that is gonna hurt us that severely. Now, there's other people that are gonna say that's not enough of a cut, I understand the people out there that are saying, don't cut anything, but there are a tremendous amount of people out there that said we have to cut. Done.
So if I'm on a fixed income, is it my tax, um, affected by that? Yes. So that, um, what I'm able to pay is a little easier to take? The other thing is, I have three students graduating this year, I would love for them to feel like this is home, and they have a place to come back and work, but with this happening, what's gonna happen to Virginia? I mean, I am really, really worried about the reputation of the school being completely lost and turned around, and people won't move here, and people won't want their kids to go to school here. We just can't cut that much.
So, I, I have a point of order, it's almost nine o'clock. If we were to try and accommodate a budget vote in advance of April fifteenth, we would need to make a decision, and it looks like we're not able to have a vote on a budget amount tonight, so it implies that we would need a special meeting next week. So I would be interested in understanding the willingness of members of the board to have a special meeting next week where we could take action on the budget, and the availability of administration to do so, and to try to parse the remainder of this agenda, to try to take care of some things we can take care of tonight. We have some serious things that we need to do that I don't think we can give justice to if we're starting at nine o'clock, just speaking for myself.
I hear you.
Start early this morning, I gotta start way early tomorrow.
Yeah.
It was an hour earlier.
Right.
You're talking next Monday?
No, I have a board meeting on Monday and Thursday next week.
Tuesday? Tuesday's a possibility, St. Patrick's Day, sure. Anybody can't make it on Tuesday?
Kurt can make it.
You can't make it?
No, that's okay.
I can't make it either.
Okay.
It doesn't mean, don't do it, but.
Wednesday? Wednesday?
I guess.
I would not recommend a meeting on Wednesday the eighteenth, because I believe there's a concert in here which will draw some of your parents.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you.
What was the issue with Tuesday? No quorum, or?
It's, um, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Friday's no good. Thursday's no good.
Saturday? Saturday morning?
Saturday morning.
I mean, we're really up against the gun here.
No, no, no.
Is that the right term?
If, if I may, if I may say something here, I nominated you, I voted for you, but now you're turning around and putting the whip on my back.
Okay, George, I, I just suggested Saturday morning, I, I don't, I don't care. I mean, I wanna be respectful of the teachers.
If we gotta do it on Saturday morning, do it on Saturday morning, I don't care.
Can you make it on Saturday morning?
I can.
Can you make it? You cannot, you cannot.
I'm not in.
Jeff cannot.
I cannot.
We are in trouble.
Did you have a forum on Tuesday?
I think you have a forum.
Yes, I was gonna say, can you do Tuesday? You can do Tuesday, you can't, I can, you can. George, you cannot, Kurt cannot, so we've got, um, one, two, three, four, five.
I don't think those odds.
Um, okay, uh, Tuesday at six? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Will you warn that, Glory? Here in the, should we do it here?
Andy, if it's easier, I mean, we have any time during the day, I don't know if that's easier, first thing in the morning, or whether it continues to be six o'clock at, it's up to you.
I, I would like the public to be there, at least available if you can, I think we might be better off taking it at six, yeah. Six o'clock next Tuesday. And this is, this is pushing it, anyway. Okay, I'm sorry. So, before we leave this subject, is there any, I've heard just a little bit of guidance, I'm not quite sure what we're gonna do with that, we will do our best trying to meet the diverse needs of everyone.
You need to come with a blank? No, I'm quite serious, I, you know, I don't think you've gotten guidance, and my expectation is that it would get hammered out on, on Tuesday with a specific dollar amount voted at that, at that point.
I, I agree. Does anybody have a?
My first question, we still need four of the five of you to agree next Thursday, is that correct?
Out of, oh, wait, out of the, if five, seven, three.
Out of seven, you have to have four board members.
Four, four, four of the.
Four voting.
Yes.
Just need a majority of the present.
We need four, seven.
Right, we got five.
No, he's asking about voting. Tuesday.
If you have five members for the quorum, you need a majority of the five members voting.
No, I think you need four.
We went through this last, last year, Andy, you know, and I looked it up in the educational law books.
Okay, I mean, a lot, that's fine, a lot of, a lot of the difference for, uh, education you have for towns.
That's right, and that's a conversation we had with Mel, and.
Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't there then.
Thank you, Kurt.
Yeah, so if you have a quorum, it's, yeah, and, and it's important, I understand that, I wish I could be here, but, you know.
We don't have absentee vote voting.
No, you can't.
Yeah, no. Would it be helpful to have, I don't know if we could set it up, but could we do? No, okay. All right, um.
Actually, ask the question, I believe our policy allows for telephonic attendance.
Do you want, would you like?
I'm not sure if I can, I'll try to figure that out.
Okay, and Kurt, would you like? You can't. Okay. All right, so, um, can we, is it possible to table the class size policy, or is that something the board, until next time, so we can get to action items and then to the executive decision?
So Laurie, Kurt and I put that on the agenda because there was some question through the budget building process from one of the board members concerning the class size policy.
I see.
It was for discussion purpose only, this, this board does not develop policy, this board reviews and adopts policy, so it was just because it had been a question.
Okay, does, does any of the board members want to go over it, have anything to say? Have any questions?
Well.
Go ahead, George.
The, the, as long as we're having a special meeting, can't we take care of the remainder of the items on here at that meeting? Can't we just close this meeting and come back and complete the agenda at the other meeting? We gotta come here anyway, um, and to, to.
The director says to be.
Neil's, to Neil's point, it is nine o'clock.
Right, and are you suggesting also the executive session would also be moved?
I would.
Can we, can we do the approval of the director's orders and the approval of the minutes real quick, and at least that, those two are off?
Laurie, you also, I'm sorry, we also need to see.
Okay, we have to do that today. Okay, um.
Well, we don't wanna talk about that tonight.
I'm sorry, Glory. Are, we're tabling class size?
By the fire alarm, we can wait till Tuesday if you want to.
It can be quick, I'm happy to speak to it while I'm here, 'cause I won't be here Tuesday.
Then I'd rather that happen.
Okay, and can we do planned dates, times for meetings on Tuesday?
You can review that on Tuesday.
And can we do requests for non-tuition students?
That actually is off the agenda, because I never received the request.
Oh, great.
So why don't we? A, B, C. A, B, C.
A, B, C.
Yes.
And we tabled class size, and D, we will talk about on the, in the special meeting. Okay, approval of director's orders, I, I can't make a motion, but would somebody like to?
This is.
Entertain a, a motion for director's bills.
For four hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty, sorry, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-one cents.
I'll second the motion.
I got a, a second, any discussion?
Finance committee's findings?
Um, uh, we've got a couple of questions, not a lot, um, there was quite a bit of insurance related money in here, um.
That incoming or going out?
Going out.
Right.
But will be reimbursed, and it's being collected.
And is there a construction related bill? I know we had.
There was ninety-six thousand for Nagley.
Okay.
Okay, um, and the, just, so everybody knows, the, um, we talked about why the budget, why the line item for the bond was only at one point eight million, and we had spent almost the two point eight, and there's some credits that are sitting in that, those accounts that Tanya is working on fixing, they were.
Not yet.
Errors made by previous business managers.
Yeah, remember you had the conversation with, um, the, um. Lady that was in my seat prior to me, and you wanted to move vendors to the right appropriate areas. Um, a number of those that you were moving were expenses that you had already paid for in two thousand and twelve, and they moved them in the current year, so now I have to undo all of that and move them in the appropriate year, so they're under the right account numbers that you're looking for. And I have the detail at my office showing me, you know, you and her went through and highlighted the ones that you wanted moved to, for an example, you had, there was a couple of Nagley and Chase that were under the engineering.
Right, so that, just so board members know what we're talking about, they were, they were misclassified, so we had contractor being classified as architect, and engineer being classified as contractor, and I went through all that and straightened it out.
And a number of those expenses had been paid for in two thousand and twelve, and when they credited them.
Two thousand and fourteen?
Two thousand and twelve. They gave you a complete history, and so they.
So it had been wrong that long.
Yes.
Sorry, just had to say it, okay.
Yes, so, so they moved them and credited them under those accounts.
Okay, and so now it.
So now I have to undo all of that and move just the current year stuff.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the board directors at the number that Chris said, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Passed. Uh, approval of minutes, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Laurie, excuse me, one of the, one of the sets is not included in your packet.
Oh, there are two sets.
Yes, I thought that.
Two sets.
So, uh, February ninth and February twenty-fourth.
I was responsible for the twenty-fourth, and I did not include it in the packet.
It's the twentieth.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was the twentieth? Thank you.
Okay, so we can't, so we're gonna do approval of the February twentieth meeting at the special meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Move to approve the regular board meeting minutes of Monday, February ninth.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nays? Um, entertain a motion for February twenty-fourth?
Move to approve the minutes of February twenty-fourth.
Second.
Annual meeting, right?
Thank you.
Isn't that one? So that was the special?
No.
Oh, that was the special before the annual, right.
So, sort of order.
Yes.
What minute, what minutes are we approving here?
Um, February twenty-fourth minutes, which should have come.
It was a meeting before the annual meeting.
We had a special meeting in front of the annual meeting.
Oh, that's right, thanks. This is, do you wanna speak, Kurt?
No.
Okay. Um, so I have a motion on the floor?
It's unseconded.
Moved, unseconded, is there any more discussion? And anybody in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Nays? Thank you, passed. And payment structure for lease purchase, fire alarm system.
So, if, if I may just provide some background on what this particular issue is, we started the renovation project, and in the course of beginning the work, it was identified that the existing fire alarm system in the building did not have the capacity to have additional circuits and enunciators added to it. Further, what was also made known, that had not been made known as we were scoping the project, was that there was not the ability for the administration to be in the office in this building and reach all of the school through the public address system. Think about that as a safety issue. So we determined that that was an immediate safety issue that needed to be addressed, and that trying to monkey around with the existing fire alarm system, uh, and leave the lack of a P.A. system in place, um, was not something that was in the interests of the students and teachers and occupants of this building. So we authorized proceeding with the complete replacement of the fire alarm system. So it was outside the scope of the project, and we identified a means of financing that improvement through a multi-year lease, and took the actions necessary to do that, except that we had a change of administration in the process. And so tonight, what you're being asked to do is to provide some language that allows us to complete the negotiations for the financing of that particular item. So we're not, we're not borrowing money to do it, we're essentially doing a lease purchase, which will have us owning the system in three, four, or five years, depending upon which way we go with this.
And that will, excuse me.
Will that address both issues?
It has addressed both issues, it's already in place, and, and it, it was done before school opened in August.
It seems like this would've come up at another board meeting.
It, it, well, we tried.
Yeah.
It was one of those agenda meetings that we couldn't get there.
Okay, so it's, it's bought, it's installed, it's not paid for, so we need to pay for it.
Should, should we have a motion on the table before we continue this discussion?
Good call. Thank you. What is needed? What form of motion is needed, because if I, I looked at the stuff and I saw four different payment structure options.
I like the motion to move that we, we discuss this, this fire drill system.
A motion that we, we discuss it?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
He just opens it.
Anybody?
You can call it right now, so we can talk about it. There you go.
Uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nays? Okay.
So, what, what kind of, what, what do we need to do?
First, you need to, um, you need to state in your minutes that you have approved the work to be, you know, to be done, which you already did. which you already did. But it needs to be a resolution. And then you also need to have a motion to choose which payment plan you would, which option you would like to go with.
So what is your recommendation on that?
Payment plan.
What was, what was budgeted for? If this started in 2013?
This didn't, this didn't...
This happened this summer?
Yeah, this, it was this, it was...
It completed this summer.
During this, okay.
Yes.
Wasn't there money left in the construction budget?
We had about $17,000 as of the end of January left in contingency. We had two more impacts on that for about a total of $2,000. So there was 15 and we were planning to use 13 of that associated with boiler repairs. So we've essentially spoken for what remained of, of contingency.
The, the problem that I have in looking at this is I think this is a ridiculous interest rate. I think that we can get the money elsewhere for less money. So we oughta just get the money and pay them.
Does that mean a bond, though?
No.
Well, we have $140,000 in capital reserves. We just haven't made any actions to use that money. And it would seem inappropriate to have this come sort of after the fact and use that for it. However, that is a source of funds.
I mean, why should we be paying over 5% in interest?
We're not.
Well, that's what it says here. Well, four, over 4%. If we go with a long-term proposal, it's 4.57.
If we pay ahead, it's the penalty.
I mean, you get a quarter of a percent on your money in the bank.
It's cheaper. Seventy, we're talking $74,000.
Because individuals can go and borrow money at less than 3%. I'm surprised that the lease rate is almost 5%.
And in reading this, it doesn't appear as if they're doing a thing for us from now on. We're responsible for the whole thing. So... You understand my point?
Can I also mention that it's already been paid for? It's already, you, the work's been done. It's been paid for. It's in your budget. I mean, it's as an expense. It's already been accounted for.
Okay.
What...
Well, 'cause we're gonna come up short.
Because you're gonna come up short. Because this was factored in to the original, the work wasn't in the original bond. So this was to cover the shortfall of that. Correct, Jeff?
So as we track our sources and uses of funds, we added another source of funds. Just like we added a source of funds when we got a grant to help us pay for a water bottle filling station. So this was another source of funds to address this particular item, which was an immediate health and safety issue. And what I would, what I would argue to you is if we do this over three years or four years, you know, if we arm wrestled over a percent, given the amount of money we're talking about, we're talking about less than $500. I don't see it as material, frankly.
Is this an appropriate use of our capital fund or not?
I would not.
Kurt and Jeff?
I wouldn't advocate to, to do that.
An unexpected repair to the building that needed to get done.
We're looking at some significant repairs to the building.
Yeah, all right. Okay, no, that's, I'm... You can talk me out of that easy. That's fine.
So I'll make a motion for purposes of...
Do we have to close the discussion?
No, because actually, we already voted his thing through so we could talk about it.
We're all set, okay, thank you.
So I would make a motion to enter into a five-year tax-exempt lease purchase for the fire alarm system with municipal leasing consultants.
Do we need other language?
No, it should be fine.
Okay, so I'll second that. That also includes the P.A. system then as well?
It does.
Okay. So where does this show up in the budget now then?
I, I, I need to clarify something, especially because we're, this is being recorded. It is not a P.A. system. It is a system through which we can speak to everyone in the building, but it is very different. And we're using it as a P.A. system because we don't have a functional P.A. system. It was never intended to be a P.A. system. So we need a P.A. system in the future. So I don't wanna refer to it as a P.A. It's an emergency notification system. It allows from two points in the building to pick up a speaker and speak to everyone through the, through those red things. But a P.A. system is something where you might be able to dial in through your phone and speak through a speaker system. Very different. We, we've been approved to use it the way we are. We do the pledge, we make announcements that way. But it is, it is not intended for that usage.
It is truly part of the fire alarm.
It is.
It's, the designed use is for evacuation of the building.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, or securing the building. Or, I mean, any one of the emergency procedures, we use that.
So my question still stands. We're talking about a budget. We're talking about reducing that budget by $150,000 and now we're talking about adding 16 and change. So is it, you said it's bought and paid for. So it's in there.
I have a copy of the check.
Yeah, no, I believe you entirely.
I don't remember exactly what account it came out of, but yes.
But you don't have a line item for this account, for this purchase, right?
It was not budgeted for.
Okay.
So what we have... Let's not be confused. It came out of the construction in progress account. It was paid for as part of one of the construction bills. Period, the end. Now what we're doing is we're bringing in one more source because we have other remaining construction bills as we finish up.
I see, thank you.
And we need an additional source of funds to wind up whole. That's what's going on.
But the $16,000 payment will need to be found in the local, in the local budget.
Yes.
Right, yeah. So it's only, it's only 16,375 this year.
Correct. FY16.
16 FY16.
So it ends up in the operation and maintenance.
I would have to put that in the budget.
Correct. Budget area. And it will go up by $16,000 in whatever proposal we put forward to the voters in April. It hasn't already? And then, no, that's the thing I'm trying to clarify. And then for the next five years, if we operate this.
Yes.
I like the other surprise of the day better, the one about the projections. If we could just book that, we could kind of offset it, but we can't do that yet.
So I have a motion on the floor.
What's the motion?
It was something that was needed, it's good, it's done.
Nope, no argument. No argument, I just needed to tuck it through.
So I have, we have a motion on the floor for accepting a five-year tax-exempt lease purchase. And it's seconded. Are there, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Passed. And I will take a motion to adjourn.
We are going to adjourn this meeting until next week, six o'clock Tuesday.
We're recessing? We're recessing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I knew it wasn't that.
Yes, okay. Is there anything we need to recess? Nothing? We're just recessing.
You got what you need for...
You don't need a motion to recess?
No. I mean...
We'll recess the meeting until Tuesday at 6:00.
Until Tuesday, 6:00 P.M.
Yep.
Here in the library. Thank you.